Inside the room.
Yeah, no, we're waiting for the window.
We got the picture.
Okay, we're ready. On record, I call to order this Lincoln City Budget Committee meeting of May 13th, 2015. Roll call please, city recorder. Kathy, sir. Dick Anderson.
Here.
Stacy Baird. Jim Davis.
Here.
Michael Holt. Excused. Chester Norakis.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
John Skipper.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Susan Walke.
Here.
Kip Ward.
Here.
Jerry Warner.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we continue the budget review, I have something I would like to read. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. This budget process is important to the city, and I thank you for your involvement. I also want to thank members of the committee for electing me as chair, and I want to remind everyone of some basic rules of procedure. As chair, it's my duty to maintain order. I know that speaking when you have a question or comment is normal and hard to suppress. However, in order to be sure that everyone has their chance to speak, I ask that before a committee member addresses staff to please obtain the floor by addressing the chair. I will recognize you by stating your name, and you may then address staff as appropriate. I also want to remind everyone that our council rules which apply to this committee require us to be courteous in addressing staff and members of the public and to refrain from personal attacks. Thank you. Mr. Chandler?
All right, committee, thank you again for coming tonight and for the opportunity that we as a staff have to present the fiscal year 2016 budget. To begin with, what I'd like to just quickly address is what we hope to cover tonight and what will be left for the meeting on Monday. We hope to be able tonight to cover the rest of the general fund and the other governmental type funds. That would take us through the street operations, the VCB. In the general fund, of course, we have the recreation department that still needs to go through. If we make it that far, which I think we will, that will leave us then on Monday to cover the public works, operations, and capital projects and the debt service. So that's my goal. That's what I'm hoping that we'll be able to achieve. Also, I was asked about a procedural question on moving forward if you -- or how does a committee member go about making a change in the budget? As I mentioned last time, the process that I have used in the past that has worked well is that before you approve the budget, you would have any changes that you would then vote on. So for example, if you wanted to increase an align item by $10,000, you would vote on that item, and then when you go through all of those items, then you would have a motion to adopt the budget as those changes have been made. I've also was asked, when can you do that? You can wait until Monday, or you can make those during the meeting, during this meeting now, and have that discussion and just to, as Chairman Walke talked about, is following the procedures of having her recognize you and then going through the motion and discussion for that. Okay, are there any questions regarding that?
Mr. Chandler, I just have one question. The review that we went through the other night, we are not assuming that those are as far as the budget committee goes. Is that correct?
No, that's a correct assumption.
Yeah.
The first part of what I plan to do tonight is some follow-up questions, some of the questions that you brought up to provide you some of the answers that we did not have that evening. There was much discussion on salaries. One thing I would refer you to is Section 4 of the city's budget where it lists all of the positions in the city and their salaries. Okay? So I'll just refer you to that and let you look over at that. Where we are with the city. One of the things to look at in this is the first question that was asked was what are our total salary increases and benefit increases for this budget? If you recall, we went through the individual departments, and they varied, and so the question became, what was the actual total for the whole city? Salaries is $8,430,507 as compared to $8,326,863 or a $103,644 increase, which is 1.24%. The benefits for this budget are $4,495,179. For last year's budget is $4,212,898, a total increase of $282,281, 6.7% increase. And then the total wages and benefits are $12,925,686 for the budget for the upcoming year. For this year's, or the budget that we're currently in, the fiscal year 2015 budget, it's $12,539,716 or $385,925 increase or 3.08% increase. Now, a couple of things to point out in this as you review this, especially as you review it against the next slide. This is the increase from last year's budget, and the amount that we are budgeting is actually based upon the estimated actual salaries and costs that we have this year, and we are anticipating we will be coming in under budget. And so as I mentioned, one of the things that we have built into the budget for this year is a 3% increase in the salaries. The next slide talks a little bit about how we're doing, and in this case, in all of the previous years, we're looking at the actuals with last year, with the current year in as being an estimate, and then with the proposed budget. You have in front of you a package with a lot of extra detail in it. That detail shows by department, and so you'll see in some of those that are labor-intensive departments that they have a higher salary and benefits as a percentage of their total department expenditures, and some of them have it much lower. What I have before you is the average for all of the cities. Debbie and I went back and looked at the last, since 2009, 2010 budget. At that point in time, the cities, well, let me jump. What you see in the green line is the benefits as a percentage of the total expenditures. This would be for all funds that have salaries in them. So in other words, we did not include capital funds because there are no salaries. That would skew the comparison. So these are just the departments or funds that actually have salaries in them. You have in the red line are the salaries as a percentage of total expenditures, and then the blue line is a total. In 2009, 2010, we were at about 48% of the salaries and benefits as a total of all expenditures, and we were at that same point this year, and you can see what the trend has been over those last few years. Okay? Any questions on that before I go to the next item?
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Where did you arrive at that?
You need to be recognized.
All right.
Mr. Warner.
Chairman. Madam Chairman.
Mr. Warner.
All right. I was asking where you arrived at the 3% this year of increase in salaries.
The, where it is, where it's, let me come back again. What you're seeing on this is a comparison of the two budgets for the previous year. We are estimating that our total salaries and benefits will be less than what we budgeted. That's due to turnover. We did not give a salary increase this year, a cost of living increase, and so it's coming in under what it's budgeted. So the 3% is based upon the estimated ending actual amount for this fiscal year, not based on last year's budget. Okay?
So it's not a cost of living is what you're saying then?
Last year, we did not give a cost of living increase.
We had budgeted for it, but we did not do it. We did a margin.
I noticed in last year's budget, there was a 2%. This year, I assumed it was 3% from what I read.
Well, I did not define it as a cost of living. When I have defined it as there is a 3% increase in the budget.
The reason I was commenting on that is when you look at inflation rate, why, you know, it was only, last year was only 0.8%. This year, first three months, it's minus 0.1%. So it's why I was questioning the 3%.
The reason why I did not put it in as a cost of living increase, but just simply put it in as an increase in the budget is because we have not completed our negotiations with the labor unions. And so I don't know at this point how any salary increases will play out in that. And so in your budget, what you'll notice is that it's just simply defined as an increase in the salaries.
Yeah, answers my question a lot better.
Mr. Baird?
Do these numbers include employees' numbers each year?
This would be the total salaries and benefits for all people we pay. So if there is an increase from a year or a decrease in the salaries, it would be, from a position, it would be reflected in this.
There's only a very small change in total FTEs between the current year's budget and the proposed budget. It's like a 0.3 maybe for the whole city. So basically, the FTE count between the two budget years are the same.
Madam Chair. If I could, just for the benefit of people who maybe aren't hip to the whole process, could you define an FTE?
Oh, yeah, sorry. FTE is a way, it's a way of measuring how many, how much staffing you have when you have a mixture of full-time people and part-time people, and it's full-time equivalent. So if you have two people who work 20 hours a week, that would be considered one FTE because together they're 40 hours a week, which would be a full-time employee. So you convert the number of, you add up the number of hours and then divide it by a full-time person.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Mr. City Manager.
I'm not hearing. Good, sorry.
Can we get new microphones?
Well, they are being put in the budget, or actually, they will come back to you as something you can vote on.
You may put it in the budget.
So there's a spike that started in year 12 to 13, and now we kind of did a spike, and now we're back to where we were in 2010. What happened in that event that is being shown here?
There could be two things that cause the change of percent because you're measuring against the department's total budget. So if you have a year where for some reason your expenditures are lower, then even if your pay hasn't changed, the percent of the total will increase. So I think that's maybe some of it. We did have, I looked at the, I looked at the actual detail. You can actually run down and compare the percents and kind of see what, how each department compares against the other to see if there's an actual change in the pay in the detail that you have. Does that make sense?
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Calculated within the pay increase, is there anything in there for performance reviews, or is this just going to be a blanket increase?
We do not have a system of pay for performance. It's, um...
For any employees at all in city employment?
Uh, any, I'm sorry?
For any city employees, there's no performance.
No, we do not have any pay for performance for any employees.
Interesting way to do business.
Madam Chairman, this is a question of Debbie. You said that there was no pay for performance, but you do have annual review.
Yes, I should probably modify that. I mean, you needed to be a successful employee to receive pay increases, and if there are performance issues, those scheduled pay increases can be held or not given. So I guess what I should have said, it's more of a pass/fail system, not a, you know, A-B-C system.
And my next question to you is, you may not be able to answer it, but do all supervisory personnel get an annual review?
Yes. We do annual reviews.
You will?
We do.
But in the past, I understand that, maybe in some...
There may, I can't guarantee that everyone was done every year, but it is the...
I understand.
It is the policy that we give annual reviews. Okay, the next question that came up was based on the costs associated with our attorney, our legal department. You have before you a handout that shows back since 2009, 2010. During the fiscal year of 2012, 2013, that is when we went to an in-house attorney. There's a couple of things that are interesting to point out in this. The first is that, as you can see, the costs certainly have been increasing. I did not adjust this for inflation, but it would be adjusted some. The other thing that's important to point out are the hours that are worked. In, during 2010, 11, and 12, the attorneys that we contracted with worked anywhere between 884 to 1,116 hours per year, and the cost, that cost came out to between $108 and $137 an hour. And then the total cost, when you add the other contract services that we have where we've used other employees and so forth, ranged between $125 and $183. When you look at fiscal years 2014, the estimate for this year of 2015 and the proposed, what you'll notice on the hours worked is that there are 2,080 hours, that's a full-time number of hours per year. The attorney costs range from $59 an hour to $73 an hour. There is staff support, which is other employees that are ranging from $12 an hour to $26 an hour. And then the total cost is $91 an hour up to $119 an hour. So that's just some information that you had asked regarding the legal budget that we had.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate the intern from the budget in the attorney's, city attorney's office.
Second.
Been moved in second that we remove the intern from the city attorney's budget discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Warner, would you mind, why? Or could you remind us how much? I don't have that open. What is that dollar amount and then why?
The reason that I figured that we should remove it is a fact that I don't think with the finances that we're lacking in other areas, like streets being a big example of it, I think this money in the general fund could be better well-spent using it in the street fund. And I think that now that we have a full-time attorney, I, after reviewing what Mr. Chandler showed me, don't have a real problem with a full-time attorney at this point, but I don't believe that we need to pay for an interim attorney, or interim to, intern rather, at this particular time when we need those funds for other purposes.
Mr. Anderson, the amount is $9,920.
Thank you. Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
If I can, back to Mr. Warner, it's kind of interesting, but the general fund does have a positive, some $600,000 going to additional reserve and balance. So that means the expenses, even with that, is a lot less than expenses.
Madam Chair, I'd like to respond to him.
Mr. Warner.
2011, '12, we spent $304,000, or $304 on streets, actual resurfacing. 12, 13, we spent $8,829. 13, 14, we spent $38,001,2. 2014, 15, we spent $101,573, and from the best of my knowledge, most of that money was spent on paving the new purchase, the property we purchased out here, Cascade Estates or whatever you want to call it. We received from the VCB $1,164,087. What I feel, that I've preached it up here time after time after time, that we're not taking care of the repair of these streets. And if you want me, I will quote you what Mr. Hawker said in regards to the streets here.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Warner, you know, I love the history. We're looking at this proposed budget, and your motion has to do with this proposed budget.
Correct.
So what my point in the discussion item is, you know, you're talking about $9,000 eliminating. I'm suggesting that the productivity may be well worth that $9,000, and would point that since we haven't gotten through the general fund and some of the other items, I think you'll see that there's plenty of dollars to allocate to streets, and I'd very much encourage you to make a motion then to perhaps put more towards streets because it's there.
I'm leaving my motion on the floor right now, and I want to quote Mr. Hawker. "Many of the older streets were not constructed to current standards, and many streets are near the ending of their useful life. Over the last 10 years, our urban renewal district has funded the replacement of many of our city streets. That program has ended." My point being is, is we need to put a substantial amount of money in the streets rather than to spend it on other items.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sprague.
I don't disagree that we need to spend more money on streets, but I don't want to be taking that little bit of money it'll cost to dump an proposed intern. I don't know that everyone is aware of the volume of work that our city attorney is going through. In the past two years that we have had him here, we have had, in my opinion, twice the production from our attorney, in-house attorney, as we did from a contract attorney, and we are working our way to being current with ordinances and what have you. There's a stack of ordinances that need to be updated, and one person by themselves can't do that, and intern would be a big help to the attorney.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I have just a basic philosophical disagreement with the support for an intern. I don't care if it's $9,000, I don't care if it's $10,000. It's not our money, just flat out. And to just throw around that, oh, it's only $9,000, well, you know what? I worked for that money. We all worked for that money, and the people that pay for us and pay for this work for that, and I want to have a, you know, a real deep respect for that, not just throw the word "just" in front of money. Now, I don't know that we're going into a deeper workload for our attorney other than to go through ordinances that, okay, if someone says they need to go over, I haven't heard anything from our attorney that says he has this big stack that he has to go through. All I know is we went through the, I heard that we needed a full-time attorney to get us through the roads end annexation, that we needed a full-time attorney to get us through the VRD issue, and apparently both have been laid to rest, as I've been told. I don't know that we have any future issues that require more legal assistance. I could be wrong, and I'm more than willing to listen. I'm just saying, I don't, I haven't heard of any big projects coming up that's going to need that. Madam Chair.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I mean, reading through this, the estimate for this year was $25,219, and the proposed is $48,744, so that's an increase over $23,000, not just the nine. So there's extra support staff besides the intern I see on here, so I see no need for the intern also.
All right, and Madam Chair...
There's been a change in benefit coverage on the support staff, and that accounts for some of that amount.
And Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Williams.
If I'm looking at these numbers, I, this is strictly salary, correct? This is not including benefit packages? Seeing a nod from the other side. Is this, the benefits included in these numbers I'm looking at? If we're looking at attorney costs, are $149,03, that's including all benefits?
Yes.
Okay. Now, will the intern also be getting benefit package?
No.
Right, but seeing these, this is some of the things, issues I have with some of the people, again philosophically, that we're hiring, that it's not just a salary, but there's all the stuff that comes with it. It's vacation time, it's unemployment insurance, it's workman's comp, it's time off, it's maternity, not maternity, but family leave, and things like that, that I just think we need to look real hard at. Is this something that we have to bring on as another employee?
Excuse me, Ms. Mamoni. Did you say the intern would not have benefits? Is that correct?
No, our temp seasonal people do not accrue vacation or sick time. They do not get medical insurance or PERS or retirement. They do get FICA, which are the social security taxes and Medicare taxes, but it's about seven...
Madam Chair, I made one error on this. I looked at the wrong page, I'm sorry. The $9,920 is the salary. There is the FICA expense of $759, so the total compensation for the intern would be $10,679.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Skipper.
So far, I have not heard anything convincing in the way of justification for this expenditure. And I think $10,000 is $10,000. And we should look at all of these amounts carefully. And looking at the spreadsheet that you provided to us, Mr. Chandler, hours worked over the past few years, it's convincing that we could get our work done in the city.
Good luck, Debbie.
Full-time, 2,080 hours a year, attorney, on staff. I think those numbers demonstrate.
That is an analysis that I personally have not done. As Committee Member Quant had mentioned, they did that three years ago, but I didn't, I was not involved with that. So I have not evaluated to look and say, how many hours do we need for an attorney? But as mentioned, the Budget Committee and the City Council did do that about three years ago. Am I correct in that?
Mr. Quant.
That you had reviewed the need for a full-time attorney about three years ago?
Yes, yeah. And we did a full review about a full-time attorney three years ago, because the one we had at the time was just part-time, and there's a lot, all of our ordinances are outdated, and we're trying to update all of our ordinances and everything else like this. Plus, I'd also like to mention that Mr. Alpicello was also, represents the city in his homeowner association. He spent, what, four hours yesterday with me as a homeowner's association, representing it up here in Maplewood, things like, there's a lot of things that he does that you don't see that he does. There's a lot of paperwork that's way behind that needs to be brought up in our ordinances. He's also the district attorney for the city. He's one that charges people and everything else like this. There's a lot of work that goes into being a city attorney. You know, and until you start looking at it, it makes it very interesting what his job actually is. And you know, it's a full-time job now.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Williams.
We're not talking about the full-time attorney. We're talking about the summer intern. We're talking about the summer intern.
Does anyone else have a comment to make? I, myself, feel that the chance to have an employee with no benefits as a seasonal employee is a great opportunity for us to catch up on things that need to be done. As Mr. Williams said, the city attorney has been involved in annexation issues, VRD issues, and with those things on his plate, other things I'm sure were not done. There are many processes in the city attorney's office that are on an ongoing basis that need to be done. And if you're working on big projects, you don't have time to do those. And I believe that this seasonal employee could help us get caught up in those things that have been set aside.
Here, here.
Are we ready for a vote?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, if I may, I haven't heard anything about, do we have this person identified? Is this going to be the number that they're going to have? We're assuming a lot with this discussion that this person is even going to be able to do what we ask. I just, it's just, say, "Give us $10,000 bucks and do something."
We're setting aside the money to make that possible.
I understand that, but I'm asking, is someone identified, or do we even-
No, we would go through the regular hiring process.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Could you restate the motion, please, Madam Chair?
I heard a motion to eliminate the position of interim, intern, thank you, Mr. Skipper, the city attorney intern position. Is that correct, Mr. Warner?
That is correct, Madam Chairman.
So we had a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
No.
Baird?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holt, oh, I'm sorry, he's gone. Norikis?
No.
Quant?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Skipper?
Yes.
Sprague? Walke?
No.
Ward?
No.
Warner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion is fails.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Madam Recorder, what was, Madam Chair?
Five yes votes and seven no votes.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, are we still on the city attorney discussion here?
I think that's up to Mr. Chandler.
I just had a quick question, if I may, about executive assistant being listed under city attorney. When I first got the card and the letterhead, it said he was the assistant to the city manager. Why is he falling under the city attorney budget?
He is my assistant, but some of his time is devoted to the attorney.
Okay.
And so that's why a portion of his salary is allocated to the attorney.
Okay, excuse me, thank you. I see that now.
The next item that came up in the discussion was the radio frequency identification, the RFID. There was some confusion that came up along that as far as the loss prevention on that, and whether or not that justified the cost of acquiring the radio frequency identification system. I've asked Kirsten to answer any questions that may come up. The purposes for adding that is to improve the efficiency of the operation. It is to assist us with the taking of the inventory. It will not lead to a reduction in staff. And then a third benefit that would come with it is the prevention of loss. But that was not the primary reason for recommending this in the budget. Are there any questions that you may have on this? Okay. The next question that came up was that in the finances telephone expenditure, there was a $600 increase, and the question was, this is actually an accounting change. Prior to 2014, the only charge that was assigned to the finance department was a cellphone. As of July of, oh, this fiscal year, we added the Sprint long distance, a portion of the Sprint long-distance charge to the finance department, and so that's where that allocate, or that's where that number came from. The long distance is about $85 a month. We were also asked the question, does the master plan update include an SDC or systems development charge review? The Parks, the Parks Master Plan project is intended to be the basis for revising the Parks system development charge. The actual systems development charge is part, but as it pertains to the general plan or comprehensive plan, it does not include a systems development charge review as part of that plan. It would follow after. Two more to go, and then I think we've covered all of the questions that had remained open. You had asked for a vehicle log of the vehicles that we have, and you have that before you. So Lila Bradley provided that with us, and so. The last question that was asked is, are we on par for police officers per thousand? That answer depends. Depends on how you measure it, okay? It led for me to some very interesting research over the last few days. There are some common benchmarks that are used on a per thousand basis. The chief is using, the number that the chief gave me was 1.2 officers per thousand. I've seen that range from anywhere from 1.8 to 2.6 on the high end. And so if you're using the 1.2, then the question becomes, what is the population you're measuring that against? If you're measuring that against a 30,000 population, which we have been as the basis because of the tourism population, under 1.2, the benchmark number would be 36, and we have 29 officers. Now, having said that, that benchmark is too simplistic. It's too simple, it's too easy to dispute, it's not an effective means for measuring how we are doing. The International City Managers Association has come out with some reports, and I know the chief has some through the chief of police association, on other means of measuring the proper staffing level for your police department. The most interesting one was a report that I read that came out just not too long ago, where they don't look at the population, but what they're instead looking at are the workload, the deployment of that workload, and the response time that you have. It's more comprehensive, and it gives a better picture of what your staffing level should be. Now, I mentioned before that one of the things that I have done in each of the communities that I've worked in and have started here is to look back at trends. That's another way to measure. I find that when you're looking at benchmarks, you're looking at a snapshot in time. It tells you some interesting information, but it is not, but I find that it's not adequate information. When you look at trends, then you start to notice if there's patterns that are coming up that you should be aware of. For example, if you're looking at your employees, a good way to measure that is the number of employees per capita. Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? If it's increasing at a steep rate, it may be that your productivity is going down. And so I find that to be a much more effective way to look at it. And also, if you combine it with some of these other ways of evaluating, you'll get a much better picture. Unfortunately, we are still very much at the beginning of that process, and it will take us several months to complete, and our goal is to have that prepared so that those reviews of those trends for your next budget. This report that I've put together has as many as 50 different trends that you look at. Expenditures per capita, revenues per capita, expenditures as a percentage of total compensation, things like that. It looks at the demographics, and I found it to be a very interesting thing, boring to a lot of people, fascinating to me. And so, but unfortunately, that is not prepared. So the information I give you is interesting, but I'm not sure it's really a good measurement because those variables can really change too easily.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Warner?
I want to address Mr. Chandler. I looked at a survey on Lincoln City compared to the rest of the state, and we have 45% higher amount of officers per capita than any other city in Oregon, and on average, what I'm saying. And I thought that was extremely high.
This is why I find that the ICMA report that I read, the International City Managers, is such a good concept and such a good practice because it's not just simply comparing against a benchmark or comparing against other communities. It is factoring in, how many calls are you actually receiving? What is the response time to get to those calls? How are they being deployed, and what is the effect on your community? So when you look at the whole picture, you have comparisons with other communities, which is always good because they're your competitors for employees and so forth. But you also have comparisons against yourself. And looking at, are you properly staffed based upon what is actually happening in your city? And like I said, I find it fascinating, but unfortunately, that won't be ready to go for quite some time as we continue to go through this.
One more question, Mr. Chandler. When we listened to Mr. Chief Killian the other night, he mentioned that if we did have a Willamette Valley Dispatch Service here, he mentioned that he'd have to have three or four, I can't remember, additional personnel that are now currently doing, working for the police department. Now, there's something wrong here in the way we're doing our budgeting. If those people are working half-time as a dispatcher, half-time working for the city police department, then we need to show more employees over there, which would reduce the amount of cost of the dispatch system. And I think that, I can't remember whether, I misheard him, whether it was four or five employees that he would have to add to be, to provide the kind of service level he wanted. So those salaries should go over to the police department.
That's fair enough. Interestingly enough, as we just mentioned on dispatch, we combine that with the general fund. We will pull it out for the audit purposes because we receive about $40,000 from the state, which requires it to be separated into a separate fund. It doesn't really make a lot of sense from an accounting standpoint. So for the purposes of the budget, we put it into the general fund. For the purposes of the closing financial statements, we'll end up pulling that out so that we meet the state compliance, or we're compliant with the state.
Madam Chair, I have one more-
Mr. Warner?
...that we talked about the other night that wasn't included in that, is I had mentioned about the fact that we, a 4% water increase and a 6% sewer increase that was in the budget. And I talked to the state today, I didn't get much satisfaction to it, out of that, but there is nothing mentioned at all in this budget hearing meeting about a hearing in regards to sewer and water rates. I think from the standpoint of the public, that should be a separate, a separate hearing for the people, because there may be people that are paying hundreds and thousands of dollars to the city every month, and they would like to participate and see exactly rate, how do I want to put it, design why they need the money. I mean, you can put it in, we went through three years where Hawker put 3, or 4% in every year, and it was buried in the budget, nobody even knew it. I purposely asked about 12 people today, did they know that there was a sewer and water rate increase? They had no clue. And I think-
Madam Chair?
Excuse me?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Quant.
Every year, it gets announced in the city council, in the newspaper and everything else, that the water rates and sewer rates are being adjusted and things like this. We have a public meeting, they have come to the public meeting, probably nobody's come to the public meetings, but it's been advertised every year, and I'm very sure if we go back and ask for a public records request, you'll probably find out what it was exactly.
Well-
The last three years, it goes into the budget, and it's just planned, it's not a done deal yet. The city council has to prove it. And if the current city council decides that they don't want to spend this money for water sewer increases and let the infrastructure go down and things like this, fine, that's up to the city council, and also take feedback from citizens. Every year, we sit here and we vote on it. And there's lengthy discussions we've had every year about the same thing, about how much money we're putting into the water sewers at city council meetings. But you have to stay the whole meeting to find out what goes on at the meetings. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In response to him, what I'm saying is, any city I've ever been involved with before, they put it in the newspaper and published it as a public hearing. And we didn't do it in this community.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ryan.
We most certainly do.
Well, it isn't in there.
I don't know what you're looking at, but there is, at the time that we adjust the budget, there is always a public hearing, and it is always advertised, well advised, advanced. It has nothing to do with this budget.
It's right into this budget.
I will follow-
Yes, Mr. Chandler?
I will follow through on this and make sure that we know the procedures, and I will let you know what needs to take place on this to comply with the state laws.
Thank you. I have a comment that we are budgeting for an increase, that doesn't mean there is an increase.
Madam Chair? If it's already built into the budget, then it has to be backed out when we, if you don't approve it.
Okay. I think we've had enough on this subject. Anybody else have a comment? Thank you.
Okay, we are ready to move forward into the discussion of the two departments that are left in the general fund. The first of those is the recreation department. Yes. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Norikis.
Ms. Mamonie, were you able to determine whether in fact or not the water rates have gone up 56% in the last-
Let me answer that.
-years or so?
Let me answer that. We, yes, but we're prepared to discuss that in much greater detail at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready for the recreation department?
I think so.
Yes, Mr. Sprague? Page 25.
Section 2.
Of, section 2, yeah.
Me, too.
Okay. The discussion of the recreation department, which includes the community center. The total budget for the community center is $1 million, or I'm sorry, for the recreation slash community center is $1,239,790, which is a 60,470 or 5.1% increase over last year's budget. There are 14.97 full-time equivalents. Now, you'll note that I varied a little bit on this in the past, and last week I talked about that there are this many full-time, this many part-time. Theirs is a little bit fluid, because they have a lot of part-timers that come in and out, and it's easier to just say that there's equivalent of 14.97 full-time employees. Some of the changes that are being proposed with this budget, we are proposing to increase the aquatic lead from a three-quarter time employee to a full-time employee. That will have a budget impact of $13,000. We were also asked, this came up in a discussion with one of our members of the committee, was, right now, the city provides employee passes to their insured employees and their dependents. We also provide that to volunteers, and we also provide that to the fire company. We were asked to look at the cost that is associated with that- We were asked to look at the cost that is associated with that and to, instead of looking at as subsidy, as having the departments actually pay to the community center the cost of that. That also led to a discussion about the costs that are associated with the water and sewer because the community center does not pay water and sewer. And so, we added that into that discussion. There are currently 126 employees that are insured by the city and receive this benefit. And they receive it whether they use it or not and they receive it for them and their dependents. I did not look to see what the usage is because quite frankly, when we sell a pass, someday somebody might come, probably the pass has been sold. So, the cost that is associated with that, family memberships, would be $104,875. The value of it is $839 a year for a family pass. When you look at the amount that is subsidized by the water and sewer funds for not charging water and sewer, it's $28,329.89 based upon the last 12 months that we have of water and sewer usage. So, that is also a part of that. Some of the major changes that you'll see in this budget is that if you look at item number 6205, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump back just a minute. The next part, this is really kind of a fun part, this is just really exciting stuff. This is what gets the employees giddy. We were asked to look at the idea of what are other water features that may be added to the community center or elsewhere in the community to create a greater attraction for not only our residents, but also for visitors. And I can tell you, it's in the toys. The pool is nice, but the water features, but the toys are what really sell a pool. Some of the ideas that we have looked at, we have not priced these out, so I don't know the cost that's associated with this. This is just more for fun discussion. Climbing walls are new features that are becoming important, or are becoming popular. They're being put in the deeper ends of the pool so that as you see on the one on the right, that one actually bends back, so if you fall, the idea is meant if you fall, then you're going to fall in the water. So, those are becoming more popular features. Wave pools are becoming popular. Left, that one is actually from a Gold's Gym. You're seeing more and more of those coming in places like Gold's Gym, they're becoming popular, they're much smaller, the water is circulated. And then, of course, if you look at the one on the right, that is a much larger type of What I have on these, these features are mounds. And these are, again, another feature that's becoming popular, they're fairly new. They're especially used with what's called Murtha pools. Those are pools that are lined. When they build the pool, they start with a cement floor, they put a mound on it, then they put thick padding on it and then the Murtha lining over the top. And it's half out of the water. Kids absolutely love it for King of the Hill, pushing each other off. And the funnest thing to watch is a father who will grab one of his children by an arm and a leg and zip them across the water up over the top of the mound. I do know that those in this type of pool will run about $18,000 to $25,000 for renovation cost. Another popular feature are the splash buckets. We have a small one of those in our pool, we have the Pelican. It holds, I think, about five gallons of water. The two that you see here hold 250 gallons of water. They have a splash barrier that, so that when it hits, it just does dump it all out, it splashes and goes all over the place. And then, another feature that is very, very popular, of course, are the jungle gym style fountains that squirt out of those and so forth. And then, the final one, and these are exceptionally popular, lazy rivers. Those are usually packed. In this case, it's all indoors. I've seen ones that start indoors and go out and then come back in. It makes sense in our community to have indoor because of the weather and the rain and so forth. Very popular features. Now, there's one challenge that we have with our community center. For most of these, something like the lazy river, you would need to expand the shallow pool. And so, that presents a challenge in and of itself in order to make that work. But, as I mentioned, it was brought up to me, what are some of the possible features that could be added either within the community center or within the community to create more water features for the city?
Quick question, Madam Chair, for me? Just so I'm up to speed on this, what's the amount that the city is subsidizing as a percentage of revenue?
We currently cover about 40 to 45% of the operating costs.
Okay. And then, if we increase participation by increasing attractions, still going to be at that rate plus the cost of the attraction? I just don't see this as being a winning, I love the idea.
There would be the cost associated with the attraction. The idea behind it is that it would increase the members that you would have that would come into it, both those that are in the area and in our case with tourism as well. Just as a, just as kind of a benchmark that you can use, the most successful pools that I know of, that are indoor pools, are going to run somewhere between 55 to maybe as high as 65% of covering the operating cost. That's not including any debt that may be associated with it. Outdoor pools are much more successful. I know that in North Ogden, the pool that I managed, we had it at 95%.
I'm sorry, you're saying successful how? Successful in attracting more people or successful in paying for itself?
It is more successful in covering its costs.
Okay.
If I can add an anecdotal piece here.
Please.
I was at a class at Willamette Lane Swim Center in Springfield last week and that's just your standard swim center with a lap pool, a pool that's warmer for physical exercise for older people, and then they have a diving pool. Well, if you might recall, in the 80s, Springfield Parks and Rec District built a wave pool further out in Springfield. And the pool manager was telling me that that wave pool now covers the operating cost of both the wave pool and the Willamette Lane Swim Center because it's so popular.
And what's their population compared to ours?
They have larger population to draw from, but then they also have busloads of children from the coast, from other areas who come in to use that wave pool because it is so unique. The closest ones are in Portland, I'm sorry.
And please, I am not speaking against such things, but I just don't want to go in like, hey, wouldn't this be fun? Yeah, but we still have to pay for it.
Have to cover the cost, right.
And I want to keep that on the board.
Madam Chair.
I believe Mr. Ward had something?
Oh, I think I might have forgotten. When you gave that figure of $104,000, was that including the fire department as well?
No, that is just insured employees.
So, when the fire department budgeted $10,000, that would be on top of this, correct?
It would be.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Warner.
I have a question to Gail, maybe I missed it, but did you say, do you track at all how many city employees that use the facilities?
Yes, we do.
And what is that number?
I've got that. We have in, it's not, the number I don't have is how many actually come, the number I do have is how many employees actually have a pass. And it was-
126.
56.
126, wasn't it?
No, that's the totals that are eligible, that's not the totals that have actually picked up a pass. That number is, I think it was 56, it was about.
Are those family passes?
Yes, they're all family passes.
I'd like to make a motion, if I could. Just one for right now. I'd like to move that we have each department transfer funds into the community center's account as they sell the memberships, or actually as they give away the memberships. And somebody could probably put that in a far better motion than I just did.
Thank you, because I'm confused.
Pardon me?
I'm confused with you.
Well, what I'm wanting the city to do is, for example, if Urban Renewal gives away two memberships to its staff, it reimburses the community center for that expense. It's just bookkeeping. But when we're looking at the community center's financial health and we have all these memberships that have been uncollected for, it makes them look far less healthy than they truly So, that's my motion. Crickets? You look confused, Roger. I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that when recreation passes are allocated to employees, that department's budget is charged with the credit to the recreation department. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's still free to the people, it's just bookkeeping.
If it helps, I did find some percentages here. City employees had 7% of memberships of our total memberships, which are about 1,600. So, city employees made up about 7% of that number the last fiscal year and had 4% of usage. So, not every employee who obtains a membership has the usage. City volunteers and North Lincoln Fire and Rescue respectively have about 1% of our total memberships and 1% of usage.
And, Madam Chair, if I could just ask a question. Can you define a volunteer for me?
A volunteer is a person who spends at least 20 hours a week, either doing city council work or at the library or volunteering for one of our youth sports programs as a coach or referee.
What did I miss? I thought we said we weren't eligible for that.
You are.
Mr. Chandler, I'm looking at you.
Yes, you are counted, you're not counted as employees, but you are eligible for this as a volunteer.
All right.
And they are three-month memberships, they're renewable every three months to make sure that you're still doing your volunteer duties.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion?
Madam Chair, just a question for clarification. And, Mr. Chandler, or maybe, is this, listening to the motion, would it be similar to this internal service fund, where like an auto expense or maintenance or, is there, could you share with us the accounting process?
There would be a charge to each of the different departments that has employees and that charge would result in a transfer going to the, actually would go to the general fund.
Okay.
There's a little bit of accounting we'll have to work out on this because the community development is part of the general fund.
Is that right?
Yeah, the recreation center is in the general fund. I'm not sure accounting-wise how we can actually show this, I'm going to have to check in with the auditors because you can get into like creating revenue by doing stuff like this. So, it may be an eliminating entry in the audit process, but we could still do it as our internal statements.
The other option that you would have, and again, they would probably need to look at this, is that you would create it into its own special revenue fund. I don't know the advantages or disadvantages for that, but that would certainly then have a transfer of the money going out of the general fund into the, into the community center.
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
We would include the transfers in the budget, just as we do now with other transfers, they would be included in that. So, for example, an employee from the sewer department, if he is using that service, the sewer department, the sewer fund would be charged. And with that charge would come a transfer, which would be just part of the total transfer. What we would end up having to budget is for the total amount. Even if all of the employees don't use it, we would still budget for the total amount of $105,000. And then, if, you know, if only 50% of them use it, then it's, you know, it's the $52,000 that would be transferred.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
I've got one more question for Gail. When you have your swim meets, do these other schools pay anything at all for the use of the-
Yes, yes. There is a $3 surcharge per out-of-town swimmer that comes directly to the community center.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any more discussion about the motion?
Madam Chair. Mr. Chandler, do you feel this would clarify the bookkeeping, simplify it, make it more complicated? Have a recommendation on this?
The bookkeeping part is computer stuff. And so, I don't see that as a big issue in having to do this. I also don't see it as that big of an issue as it pertains to the employees because the benefit is still available to them. And so, we would have to simply figure out how we do the general fund departments transferring money to the general fund departments. And we'll have to explore that a little bit, but I don't see it as a big issue.
And do you feel that this would reduce the subsidy, if you will, that the city is providing for the community center? On paper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the reasons that I actually like this idea is that cities are, with pools, are you criticized because they don't cover the costs. And sometimes that criticism is, criticism also comes in the form, "It's being hidden." So, anything that brings more light to things, I think, is a good thing. Plus, I also, when people will say that, you know, you're not covering its cost, well, there isn't a pool in the states that covers its costs. Cities do them and why you find that private organizations do them, except on a small, limited basis or very large basis like you'd have with the Six Flags over. And so, the goal that I have always found with city pools and the city community centers and the recreation centers is to, is very far as you can on covering its costs. So, when I mention if you are covering 55 to 65% for an indoor pool, you're doing well. If you're covering 6% on indoor pool, you're doing very well. One of the difficulties that communities like us have with indoor pools is that they're used great in the summer, used in the winter, but you cannot get the same number of people That's why monthly passes, annual passes, quarterly passes, especially annual passes, are so much better than these because they will cover the cost whether somebody is coming in the summer, coming in the winter, week or five days a week. But, you know, some, a good rule of thumb for an indoor pool, if you're up around 55%, you're doing well.
Any other questions about the motion? We have a motion on the table. Been moved and seconded that the departments transfer funds to the recreation department for employee passes. Can we have a roll call, please? Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baird?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Norikas?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Skipper?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
No sense getting started with other departments. If I could also make a motion, going backwards, since that appears what we're doing. Last Monday, our first meeting, when we were going through the police department budget, that line item on the bottom of page 21, recruit and relocation bonus, showed $10,000. But when the chief went through that in detail, there was only a couple thousand that really was there for bonus. My motion would be to increase that budget item from 10,000 to 20,000. And specifically, that additional 10,000 to go towards the actual incentive bonus. You know, the, as I recall, the chief was wanting to, try to buy experienced folks so that, as I'm remembering, there were three items built into this one, one line item. If that all makes sense.
Mr. Anderson, are we referring to line item 6206004?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would definitely second that. I think we're short three officers at the time.
Yes.
That's why we're allowing maybe 5,000 apiece for moving fee. Definitely second it.
So, it's been moved and seconded to increase line item 6206044 to $20,000 with the additional $10,000 specifically for incentive bonuses? Is that correct?
Okay.
Discussion?
Relocation.
Location.
Oh, relocation. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Just a point of question. Since we, if we increase this by 10%, do we need to decrease something else in this, that department by that amount of money?
You can certainly make that in your motion if you want to decrease that somewhere else. You could make it for a specific line item. You could say, decrease the police budget somewhere else. Or you could leave it to us to come back with a recommendation on that. Just a reminder that what you're approving now doesn't necessarily mean it will be in the final budget because you still have to adopt the final budget. And that will show how everything is balanced out with the information that you came in. If you are still good with that, then you adopt the budget, all of these go into place. If you're not good with that, then you have to do some more massaging of it.
So, I, to clarify in my own head, at this particular moment, we can vote for the motion, and we don't have to immediately come up with 10,000 reduction.
We will come, we will come back and show where that would come from.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Just for my own clarification, since I wasn't here and I might have missed that part in my review. The extra 10,000, is that to correct an error? Or was this an increase? I didn't quite understand what you'd said, Mr. Anderson.
It's definitely an increase. When the chief explained what that was, and I'm recalling, there's three items built into the existing $10,000 that make that up. But his plan was to try to recruit existing officers so to give them a bonus for relocating to Lincoln City. But when we quizzed him about it, there was only, like, $2,000 in that specific line item. So, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, is let's get it up to where it has, is the meat behind it, to try his experiment. The, to me, the offsetting stuff should be over in the training, productivity kind of stuff because you'd be getting experienced officers to Lincoln City quicker.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions about the motion? Okay, Mr. Chair?
Okay, Anderson?
Yes.
Baird?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Bolt, or, sorry, I didn't cross him off. Norikas?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Skipper?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Warner?
No.
Williams?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. White?
Thanks for bouncing around. I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Do your microphone, please.
This is, since we're, we still have Gail up there. I would like to, I would move to set aside $100,000 to identify and/or study water features that can be added to the community center or other locations in the city, and that these funds come from line item 111-091-6780001. The appropriated fund balance contingency?
Could I have the line item again, please? Thank you. So, it's been moved, do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, could I just get clarification so we don't miss a chance to second this? Can you explain to me again what it is you're asking for and where it's coming from? I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
I think.
I understand what you're asking for, but where, you gave me a line item. I don't know where that's at, and I want to just be on the same page with you.
Fortunately, I had help with this, so this is gonna be correct.
Councilman Ward, would you like me to answer that?
Please.
If you look on page 29, you'll see at the very bottom, or the, you'll see item number 6780001.
Yes.
Appropriated fund balance contingency of $1,900,000.
All right.
So, that would decrease by $100,000. And then we would add an expense item in the recreation department for $100,000.
All right, and could you just speak briefly, if that's very possible, about that fund? I'm sorry, say that again? Can you fill me in just a little bit about that fund?
Yeah, the, it's, what it really is, is part of your fund balance. The total this year is $5,152. Under Oregon law, if the city is not able to go in and, and appropriate money if it's a part of the appropriated fund balance, in other words, the 3, 132,000 you see, 00502,
Right.
is untouchable.
Okay.
So, a practice that cities have to, to protect themselves for emergencies, for other expenditures, is to make, is to make a portion of the fund balance a contingency.
Okay.
And so, we put in it as 1.9 million so that if during the year you need to amend the budget for one reason or another, that is a possible fund.
And then, Mr. Ward, again. So, again, you want that 100,000 to come out of that?
Yes.
And again, we don't have, we're not tied to it. It's just, it's gonna come back to us for a vote later. Is that correct?
That would be correct. What, what will happen from here is that we will come back showing the changes on the, to the budget with these items, and then you will vote on the final budget. And, and that also gives you opportunities to make changes as well. You can make changes up to the point till you make a, you approve the budget and send it on to the city council.
And then one last for Mr. Ward. This would be dedicated to?
Dedicated to?
Just the recreation fund, or to what you have in mind for it?
Well, you know, our, we have a fine community center. And, um, let's see, I'm trying to put my words together here, my thoughts together.
I just want to make sure that if, if you're asking for it to go to something, that we say this is what for?
Yeah, well, it could go to the community center. That's where you're gonna look at first. We've got, yeah, it's, it's just to study it.
A study, okay, thank you.
And maybe, maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't go well at the community center. We find that out. Maybe it needs to go to 51st. But my first, my first choice would, in enhancing our attractions, is to go where we already have a lot of capital invested. It's a, it's a super facility now. But the advantage is of that particular attraction is that it is not only attractive to the tourists, which is good, which puts more money in the TRT funds, which builds things that, that the normal person doesn't pay for, that you and I do. But also, it's good for our kids.
No, no, I'm not arguing that. I'm just trying to clarify what you asked for. So, it's, so it's gonna be to do a study for the water park expansion?
Water park in particular.
Got it.
And there's a lot of enthusiasm. There's already been a lot of work in it. But basically, it makes a bookmark. So, it gives us a shot at taking a serious look at it rather than just talking about it.
Well, you have my second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded to set aside $100,000 from the appropriated fund balance line item 6780001 to study water features, new water features at the community, somewhere in the city. Okay.
Hopefully, the communities.
Madam Chair?
Any further discussion? Mr. Davis?
Um, just because I think it was mentioned earlier by planning, I think in the comp plan that they wanted to spend $120,000 study on was also to be kind of inclusive of that water park or that thing. So, I don't want to double-budget the same money neither. I think we need to find out how much of that, $120,000, is directed at that.
Are you talking about the park's master plan?
Well, they're going to, this year, planning is in their budget to revise the 1984 comp plan. And part of that is going out to the public and seeing what they want and what's practical. And I know the water feature was in there two years back because it was in an urban renewal thing. I also know Urban Renewal's got budget money, acquire a piece of property adjacent to the community center this year that's in the budget. I believe that number's $350,000. So, there's money left out of that purchase, or if they have additional funds to do research there. I hate to tag it in three different areas and have a whole bunch of money going in the thing. Right now, I see a possibility of three items in the budget that are being directed at that.
As with the other plans, the comprehensive plan and everything else, before we would proceed, if, if you're interested in this motion, before we would be proceeding, the staff would be bringing back to the city council the procedure on how we would go forward. This is making a budget item to identify or to study. We would need to bring something back to you to tell us how we would go about that process. And you would have to prove that as a city council.
Yeah, and I'm not back in, oh, since here, but back, I know, when Urban Renewal first started, when we first started up, when we were doing 51st Street, I don't remember. I think there might even have been a little study then on a water park issue back then. I know there was a lot of discussion. I'm not sure if the city paid for a study at that time or not.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Norikas?
It strikes me that a label for this would be a feasibility study. And because it's budgeted, doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Right.
And, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
So, I can piggyback on what Mr. Norikas said. Is, if we budget for it out of that fund, is, and we don't use it, does it go back to that fund? Or does it stay in recreation?
No, at the end of the year, any unexpend, unexpended amounts, the amount of the expenditures that are below revenue go into your fund balance. It doesn't, it doesn't just simply carry over.
But it couldn't just be simply absorbed and go, "Oh, well, we had other costs and we didn't use it," and?
On this kind of an expense, not without your approval.
Okay. Any other comments? Are you ready for a vote? Okay. Please, thank you.
Williams?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Sprague? Skipper?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Quant?
No.
Norikas?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Baird? And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Other items that we just needed to bring up with the recreation department. If you, um, I'm on page 20, 25, I believe. Yes, 25. Got a number off. We have a decrease. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong department. Under 6205002, we are proposing to add some additional advertising for the, um, for the, uh, the community center. Specifically, one of the things that we're, we're proposing to add is $2,525 to this for advertising with Cinema 6, advertising, the movie theater. We also are proposing to increasing, increasing the radio advertising budget on this as well.
This is in a, an attempt to draw more visitors, as well as locals?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Norikas?
Gail, have we put anything in the budget for a sign?
I do have money in the budget for a sign, and we'll be working with Urban Renewal and the VCB for that, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
On the advertising for the Cinema 6, is that a year-long cost?
Yes.
And you'll have year-round exposure in the theaters?
Yes, yes.
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
That is where any of our independent contractor instructors fall under, personal trainers, people who teach classes. They are now independent contractors and no longer employees. That goes under that line item, as well as our annual services for the elevator, the fire alarm system, North Lincoln Sanitary, our HVAC system. All of those are dumped under contracted services because there are reoccurring expenses every year. Yes, it does.
Absolutely. And, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Quick question on safety. It's a rather generic word, and the, and the budget's gone kind of all over the place here since 2013.
Yeah, that's because things have been taken in and out of that. It kind of crosses over between training and safety. And this year, what we have in there?
If I could just ask, Gail, and what is, in your mind, what does, what does safety mean?
Um, it's safety of employees and visitors to the center and the general community. A couple of items that have increased for the coming year is our store of emergency food supplies. We have a limited supply on hand now, but as you know, the community center becomes a warming shelter. And in worst-case scenario, it's a Red Cross center where the Red Cross would come in and take over. But that is probably days away from any major incident that happens. So, we have to be ready to care for locals and visitors. So, I've increased my line item for dried food goods that we have on supply. Also, American Red Cross up their fees. So, anytime we have first aid- Also, American Red Cross up their fees, so anytime we have first aid CPR training and we give certificates to the people who take the training, including our employees, we have to pay a pretty huge cost to Red Cross for each of those certificates.
We don't have a, North Lincoln doesn't have a certified instructor in that?
No, we have a certified and, American Red Cross instructor in-house, so we don't have to pay the instructor, but we have to pay Red Cross to receive the, the books and the certificates.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
Yes, yes, we have several items that are in disrepair and close to being obsolete. We sanitize our main pool with Diatomaceous Earth, otherwise known as DE, and we have a set of filters in a pit, and the filters are covered with the DE, and that's what the water goes through to sanitize. The covers on the filters are kind of a mesh material, the filters themselves are plastic, and we have not replaced the filter covers in a number of years, so there are holes in them that allow not only the DE, but any debris from the pool, like strings from your clothing or swimsuit. People bite off pieces of noodle, goggle straps, they wind up, and they could go through those filters into our heating system and wreck havoc. There's also, we want to replace lane lines for the same reason. They're very old, and the plastic is starting to chip out of the lane lines, and they wind up into our filter system. As well as the blanket for the small pool, it's fraying on the edges. We have some brand-new heat exchangers that were installed going on two and a half, three years ago now, and the tubes that run through the heat exchangers are about a quarter of the size as the tubes that ran through our old ones. And so, any of this little debris that makes its way through the filter system is clogging up the heat exchangers, and now my staff is having to go in and purge those heat exchanger tubes about every month or so. Every time they get plugged up, the pool temperature drops, we have to backwash to clean the filter pit, and then purge the tubes, and then that means more water introduced to the pool, which has to be heated, so we're going like this in our heating, and the customers are not happy because the pool temperatures are fluctuating again. So that's why those items are on there. We also need to service our filter system for the spa, which is a contained sand filter system. If the sand sits there for too long, it turns into concrete, and it's not useful as a sanitizing agent anymore. We also want to acid wash and regrout our pools, it's looking pretty bad, and the more you do that, it makes it crystal clear, it keeps the water cleaner. And the last thing we hope to do is repair the top of the starting dive blocks, they're starting to wear quite a bit, and we've had some swim team kids, some customers start to slip on those blocks, so that's a safety issue. We've tried putting tape on it, you know, adhesive tape like you put on stairs, but something that's immersed in the water, or getting water on it all the time, that just doesn't do well, and so we need those blocks replaced. And then, also contingency for pump repair, those lovely pumps, they run 24/7, and sometimes they wear out.
Madam Chair? Could you just tell me which line item, I noticed in the text, you identified ADA improvements being made, and I couldn't find which line item.
That would be, that would be 6340300. ADA improvements.
Oh, they got you. Thank you.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
And forgive me if I'm just going over old ground here, but I get confused by fluctuating numbers, and maybe it's a budgeting thing that you can't put money away or schedule repairs. This kind of gets, this is not on the repair side, but the part-time and seasonal salary, we've gone from 2012, from $9,600 to $22,000, to $30,000, to $22,000, to $33,000, and I'm just kind of trying to get a handle on, what am I missing in here that jumps up $10,000, goes down $10,000, jumps up $10,000? On line 2001.
Talking about salaries, our time seasonal salary.
Is that still in yours? No, I've jumped, I've jumped ahead, haven't I? Or is that still yours? Nope, that's a different department.
Okay.
You're off the hook. Thank you.
I would like to expound a little bit on the one small salary adjustment, or FTE adjustment. We have a very talented aquatic lead, he is now three-quarters time, and I would like to bring him to full-time. Right now, a lot of other staff people are combining to do the job that he would do if he was full-time, and that includes our aquatic supervisor, who's putting in a lot of overtime, even though he's exempt. This person would do things, he provides evening and weekend onsite building supervision, provides cash handling oversight for our evening and weekend front counter clerks. We have improved our lifeguard training and qualifications under this person. It would help also improve our aquatic maintenance and safety record-keeping, which is critical. This aquatic lead also coordinates swim lessons and swim instructors, and this includes private swim lessons, and under this current aquatic lead, our private swim lesson numbers have increased by 70% in the last fiscal year, so that's been a nice revenue source there. And this person also provides backup coverage for front counter clerks and teaches first aid and lifeguarding classes. So it's, it's a very valuable spot, and I would like to increase his time, just so we can make more use of his skills and not wear out my aquatic supervisor.
Any other questions about the Recreation Department?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
As Mr. Chandler mentioned, it'll be about a $13,000 impact on our budget.
And it is included in this budget?
Yes, it's included in here.
Any other questions of the Recreation Department?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next fund is the General Fund, or next department, General Fund, non-departmental. Can you explain that for us?
Yes. Non-departmental fund are expenditures that, and that are associated with every different department. There's not one specific department that they're, that they are tied to. Debbie, you want to give a better explanation than I just did?
Some of the things in here are like support for the local bus program, that's not really related to any departments in the city. There's some, you know, emergency planning, monies, it's really, it's really any expense that doesn't relate to a department.
Some of the items that, that we need to mention, the current budget is $667,419, which is a $225,700 decrease. Mayor Williams had talked about the salaries, the part-time salaries, which are line items number 6102001. There are two positions that are associated with this, both of which are part-time. One of those positions is our Emergency Management Planner, Mr. Mark Nelson, who is a halftime employee. The other was, I think it was an experiment that we did, and the reason why our estimate, the reason why our estimate for this, this current fiscal year is under what we budgeted, is because we had created an open position that we called Floater, was with the idea that we would create our own temporary position, we would train that person on the various duties that they have within the city, and if there is a need for a temporary employee, then we would call upon that, that employee. And that, that total cost for that is $10,189. That's not something that I'm particularly sold on. If, if, if we're shorthanded, we, you know, we need to absorb the work with our staff, or if we really do need to go to a temp, then let's go to a temp service and hire somebody. So, it was a nice idea, but it's not one that I'm personally really sold on, so, but I did leave it in this budget, so that it would be for discussions. The other items to note in this, 6202001 is a significant decrease of $32,000, that is due to the recording fees that we had for last year for the roads and annexation. 6320401 is a decrease by $30,000. That is, that decrease was, was result of an emergency generation, generator, LED reader boards and things that were taken care of previously. And then finally, we had in 6340401, a decrease by $140,000 from land, last year's budget for land and easement purchase, and we're not proposing to purchase land this year. One other item to note, one of the things that was a discussion that we had quite a bit on, and we will discuss this much more as we get into the street discussion, the street fund, is the need to increase the amount that we are putting towards roads specifically for overlays. Our, the amount that we have budgeted traditionally has been somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000 per year. We, I asked, I asked Lila, and I've already done this, to look at how much we would actually need if we were to overlay all of our roads over a 20-year period. The life of a road is about 20 years, if you don't do anything beyond just the basic maintenance of it. When you put the overlays on it, it continues to extend that. The cost of rebuilding roads is significantly higher. Her estimate is that we would need an additional $100,000. So the goal that I have set for us is to increase that by $100,000 per year. Now, in this year's budget, we're proposing to increase it from the transfer by $150,000, that would transfer over, for a total of $250,000 over to the street capital, to be used with what is already budgeted, to be, to be used on road overlays. Part of what Lila has done is to put together a map showing the conditions of the roads, fair, good, poor, better, you know, and so forth, and, and then we will use that as the means to, to determine which roads would be overlaid each year. Now, I might add that this is a departure from our past practices. In our past practices, we have not relied on these kind of transfers, extra transfers for the funds. The, the concept that we're working off of is that the city has done well, and I don't anticipate this will change at all, of coming in under budget. Either our revenues have exceeded our projections, or our expenses have come in under our projections. And so, the, the proposal that I'm really making is that we use a portion of the savings that we have each year to transfer for the next year, over into the street fund. So if we are, $200,000 were coming in under budget, then we know we're going to designate $100,000 of that to go towards the streets, and just adopt that as an ongoing policy.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Warner?
Mr. Chandler, I just want to, the money that you're referring to transferring in the streets, I think is excellent, but that money has nothing to do with the two projects that are in the mill right now for the $260,000 project for rebuilding from, what is it, 17th Street to...
I'm going to bring Lila to answer that question, so.
Get down there.
I have to get down to the streets here.
The added, the added funding would be for other street overlays. Those two projects are budgeted and on track.
The two projects are budgeted, I see.
Yes, and that was Southwest Coast, and it was, it was Northwest 15th on Harbor to 17th, and then we are looking at doing the second phase of that from 17th to 21st Street. And that has some sidewalk and paving.
I guess what I was getting at was the fact that it'd have to be in addition to these projects that are already planned, so that we'd have money on this 20-year program that Mr. Chandler was talking about, and could continue that every year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
this fund, in the street capital fund, so if we wanted to increase it, we would have to put more, more transfers into it. There's, there's no unappropriated fund balance in the street capital fund.
That would be for the, that would be for the non-departmental department, and that is correct. Last year's budget was $893,119, this year is $667,419. When you look at the, the city general fund as a whole, it's expected to increase the general fund, fund balance, which would be the, which would be the contingency plus the unappropriated fund balance by about $645,000. You moved ahead. He gives a page number?
Or it couldn't feed us.
Okay, if you're, you are, again, looking at pages 57 and 58, you have a total, yes, and what Debbie was saying is correct, you have a total budget for this coming year of $1,258,000, which includes $526,977 of your, of a beginning fund balance. That's line item 4890010. We are proposing this year to spend all of that, all of the $1.258 million, so that your total ending fund balance would be zero. So if you want to increase the funding for street capital projects, you would need to transfer it from a different fund. So, for example, you could transfer from the general fund.
I'm sorry.
to carry over to the next year. Or it could be spent this year. So it is appropriated. It can be, uh, adjusted at any point in time by the council, or you can adjust it here.
Madam Chair.
You'll follow me?
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ron, I have a question, and maybe it goes back to Lila. Street overlay projects, there's four fifty, but then you have a separate line item for roads and streets. Now that it's annexed, is that part of the four fifty, or is there no money for out there this year?
We have budgeted the one seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five thousand for this year, and we've, we've spent that on the grading and graveling project. So we've actually improved all of the gravel roads. And that project came to, um, about a hundred thousand dollars. And so we've already done that project, and for some reason, it didn't carry over into the year-end estimate. I'm not sure why. And then I also have seventy-five thousand left, and we're looking at a major drainage project that will go down Northwest Fiftieth Street, partially down that road where it's washed out. I don't know if any of you have driven down that road. And then also at Fifty-second Street, um, there's, there's a pothole there that fills up with water you could, um, lose a car in.
Yeah.
So, and there's no place for the drainage to go over the bluff or easements, and so we're going to put in catch basins at that corner and, um, put in drainage down that street to tie into Fiftieth Street. So that's about, our engineers estimate, estimate is seventy-five thousand, finish that up. So I'm still working on that and trying to get it finished by June thirty.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Warner. The four fifty on street overlays, that is scheduled for what projects?
And those, those are the, um, the ones that we were talking about earlier.
The two projects?
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's Southwest Coast and then the Harbor project.
All right. So then we would have to, if we wanted to get on our twenty-year schedule, we would have to move some more money in to accomplish that, right?
Yes, or, um, as Mr. Tierney mentioned, using that capital reserve. And so, and so what I, what I would do, we, um, as Mr. Chandler mentioned, we have all the streets, um, categorized and mapped. And so what I do is come to council with a list of those streets, and I do a PowerPoint, show them all of the streets and what staff is recommending, and then they can make a decision on what streets that we actually do.
But we need to get the money in there to be able to do that, correct?
Correct.
So you're proposing a hundred thousand dollars, and you think a hundred thousand dollars is going to be adequate money to maintain that street paving pool?
Um, well, with the two projects that we have on, on board, it'll, it will add, you know, to the overall.
I understand that, but I mean, if we're, if we're looking at the rest of the streets, if you intend to start it this year, well, then you're going to need extra capital in the street budget to get that twenty-year program going. Or am I not making myself clear?
No, you are, you are.
So I guess the question that I have then is that the...
Mr. Chandler, into the, in the mic.
Projects that are listed in the four hundred and fifty thousand, are they part of the, uh, overlay maps that you had looked at?
Well, they're, yes. The Southwest Coast, it's been on the books for some time to get that project completed. And also Harbor, we had to go back, council wanted us to redesign, um, Harbor, and so we did that. And it's ready to go to bid. We're, we had planned on building that, um, after September fifth, after Labor Day, which is, which is our usual.
The scandal that I'm talking about.
Yeah. We, we can use more funds for this year's overlay this coming year.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I mean, Jerry, there, there is capital reserve of five hundred and forty-eight thousand, so they could take three hundred thousand or, three hundred thousand out of that this year and work on that. So there's money there without funding it more.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes, they're, they're, I'm sure they're on the, on the list. I don't have them, you know, listed as projects yet, but they're on our map of, as far as...
Storm drain.
Yeah, we have a culvert project that we need to do there under the street. So there, there's a drainage issue there. But when that's fixed, then we would, that street was overlaid a few years ago, so, so we just need to do that repair to the storm drain.
Are you, are you talking southeast Fourteenth or southeast? Southeast.
Okay. 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 I'll take a close look at that one.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Two quick questions. I want to see if this is included in, in these. Mr. Sprague and I talked a little bit about an idea he had for holding contractors accountable for some kind of bond or something for when their, their patches sink, um, have, if that's the right word. Uh, is this, is there anything in here to cover existing repairs that have become hazards?
Well, actually, we have, um, a list of repairs that are some of our water cuts and other, um, cuts that have happened in the roads. And so we have, uh, a whole list of areas to patch, and so we're gonna actually put that out to bid.
Okay, so that's not just, we're not just talking simply road overlays, there are patches?
There were, yes, there were patch areas.
Okay, then another question, and forgive me if this is foolish, because I'm still new to the game here. Sidewalks, is that something that's strictly done as assessed against the owner? Do we not develop sidewalks as a city?
Well, we, we are on Harbor, and we have through the urban renewal project, projects on the highway. Um, we just did the one from southeast Nineteenth on Highway one oh one to Oars Warren.
Okay.
And that was urban renewal funded, and we designed that and built that project. We're doing, um, the intersection at Twenty-second Street, that'll start after July fourth, and that's one we talked about at a council meeting recently.
Well, that'll be a repair of an existing, right, or modify it?
Right, it's going to be.
It's not, you're not building new ones.
Correct.
So my, I guess my question is, is there anything in here for additional sidewalks?
Well, the, actually, the funding, um, you know, if there's fill-in areas that we need to do with this overlay money, it's street, sidewalk, and storm drainage. And so it's not just for overlays.
Okay, all right.
You know, and so we would bring recommendations to council and options.
All right, and if I get one more question. Street signal maintenance. What signals do we have that we maintain? I'm, I'm at a loss to think of.
We, we have to pay a percentage of ODOT maintaining our traffic signals at Twenty-second Street, Logan Road, and so that is, that pays for that solely. That's just all that line item is for. In some years, it can, it can fluctuate depending on how much they, how many bulbs they have to replace and heads.
That's what I figured, but I thought I'd ask. Okay, thank you.
Do we do anything with the outside agency requests at this point?
No, there's, uh, council usually appoints a, a committee to, a group to actually allocate those funds. Um, you, as a budget committee, do approve the total amount that is to be provided, but you don't get...
And where is that total amount? Oh, um, I see. Six two three one one nine nine. We have fifty-seven thousand budgeted, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we have approximately eighty-six thousand in requests, a little bit more. Um, let's, it's eight o'clock. Let's take a ten-minute break.
Testing, testing, testing.
Jeremy, can you hear that? Can you hear?
Test, 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 test.
Thirty, I think. Well, we just...
Is it on now?
Yeah. We have, and, and I have money for them.
Yeah, but I like to turn.
Best private, best private, please.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's correct.
And we have approximately $86,000 in requests, a little bit more. Let's, it's eight o'clock. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Testing, testing, testing.
Jeremy, can you hear that? Can you hear?
Test, 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 test.
Thirty, I think. Well, we just.
Is it on now?
Yep.
Yeah. We have, and, and I have money for them.
Yeah, but I like to turn.
Best private, best private, please.
Testing, testing, testing.
I didn't get the memo.
Sorry, I thought we had all our technical difficulties fixed.
Test, test, test. Test?
No.
I'll just speak.
Maybe we should adjourn.
Testing, testing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're ready. He might as well just stay up here for a while. Because we'll have a hard, open space in the streets.
Are we back on record?
I have several emails that I received that the public is not hearing three people, and they're the ones with the portable mic. So, maybe we can share the built-in microphone so that they're able to hear the whole entire meeting. They have not been able to hear Roger Sprague at all.
Well, that's unusual.
Okay, we are in section two, page 31.
Yeah.
The next three funds that we talk about should go fairly quick, and should not be nearly as exhaustive as the general fund. The first of those is the Lincoln Square Operation Fund. That is for the operation of this building. It also includes the Price and Pride, which we are the landlords for that building. The total budget is $442,074, which is a $14,653 or 3.4 percent increase. The ending fund balance is projected to be $35,393, which is a $23,651 increase. There are two major revenue sources for this fund. The first is item number 4601060, which is the lease payment of $191,000. That, again, comes because we are landlords for the, for the shopping, for the grocery store. The second is the transfers of the various funds into this, into this fund, which is The different funds use this building. They pay this fund to maintain this building. There are two full-time employees whose salaries are allocated to this fund. Just one expense point to bring out. Item number 6203001 includes a $5,000 increase in the electricity budget. And that's all I really have on, to discuss on this operation. The next, the next budget, or the next fund is the Public Information Access Fund. That is on section two, page 34. This, excuse me, this fund is used to operate the city's public access channel. The total budget is $58,890 with a projected ending fund balance of $22,269. The major source of revenue is from Charter Cable, who provide both a financial payment as well as the reserved space on their channel lineup. There is one part-time employee whose salary is allocated to this fund. He is the gentleman that broadcasts all of our meetings. There is one policy issue that I'd like to throw out there. It's not really for discussion tonight, but it's one that I would like to look at in going forward. I do believe that this channel is an underused asset that the city has for marketing the community. When you look at the reach that the, that the cable system has into the different hotels, D's and so forth, it's an opportunity to create some marketing opportunities for the city. I'm not proposing anything within the budget. I just throw that out there as something that I would like to discuss with the city council in the future.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ed.
You alluded, earlier, Mr. Ward mentioned about new microphones. You alluded to that. Would that come, wouldn't that be in this part of the budget?
Is that in this budget?
The problem is, there isn't really much resource in this budget. If we budgeted in here, we'd have to increase the transfer from the general fund, which we could do, so, but we'd either pull it from the general fund, probably non-departmental, or we'd increase the transfer and budget in here.
Okay, the next fund is. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Ed.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry. Back to the maintenance. Is this including the, the, because I notice there's different crews for different things here. We have two people who take care of the facilities here, Steve and, I'm sorry.
Dave Manninger.
Right. Is that who you're talking about in this budget?
Yes.
Okay, what about the folks who do the power washing and do the lawn mowing, all that? That's a separate department?
That's, he went back to our Lincoln Square budget, and you're doing the, or you're doing the, right.
I'm just kidding. So, it's not, that's from a different department, correct?
Yeah. The Lincoln Square budget, they, we have, we provide the maintenance, custodial, and security for this building.
So, then the Lincoln Square would pay the other department for the services of power washing, lawn mowing, streets, the maintenance of the lot?
Right. Parks takes care of the mowing in the front of the building.
And so the Lincoln Square fund pays that?
We, we actually don't transfer funds for that. That's part of the parks, it's part of the parks fund.
So, it's a park?
Well, it's considered, you know, it's part of our.
I'm lost.
It's part of our, it's like the Vic Hill Park on the back street. It's a, it's a park.
But it's not.
And they do the mowing here, and they, they do the mowing in quite a few different places like that throughout the city.
And the power washing of the building? That's a significant investment.
The power washing is the street, that's the street department, and we have the power washer, and we have the bucket truck, and so they do that service for the building.
And all city buildings?
Not, well, this building. Our other buildings don't really, whoever is in charge of that building maintains that building. Our facility staff here does not go out to other buildings and maintain them.
Okay, well, I just think for, as we've talked about some other issues about keeping things accountable, if we're going to charge one, shouldn't we charge the other? It doesn't make a whole big difference to me, but it's just, again, if we're going to talk about elevating our game.
Yeah, it's a few man-hours that we can allocate.
A thought. The next fund is on, in section two, page 36. It is the Aggett Beach Closure Fund. This is for a landfill that has been closed, which we used to contribute. There is a consortium which manages that landfill, and we, we pay into that each year for the management of it. The cost is $40,000. There is sufficient amount in the fund balance to last for several years. The ending fund balance is projected to be $674,286, and that's something we're required to do.
Is there a projected end to that?
I'm going to let them come up and speak to that.
Mr. Tierney. When the $674,000 is gone?
There is a projected end. Whether DEQ will allow it or not is another question. This consortium started back in 1984. The landfill was actually closed in about '94. Took a couple of years to get the first 10-year permit. We're almost through with the second 10-year permit. I think we got 12 more years, and we'll be at the 30-year limit, which they have put out there for us, but whether that happens or not, I have no idea. But, one thing I do want to bring up is each year, the consortium contracts with an engineering firm, the engineering firm projects what the remaining costs are going to be for that 30-year period. And we get a letter back from them, actually, I got one here from DEQ. Now, it's last year's letter. This year's letter hasn't quite got here yet, but the remaining cost is approximately $2 million for the closure cost, of which we are responsible of 25.3 percent, or $500,000. And we have $700,000 in our fund, so we are definitely overfunded. We no longer charge the surcharge. In fact, we, we quit charging the surcharge back in 2005. And actually, the cost, the ongoing costs are actually getting less each year because the monitoring and the results are better almost each year. We used to have to do it once a quarter. Now, we only do it once every six months. That's one of the main costs, is this monitoring and the testing of it. Number two is the Leachate, there's a whole piping system in this thing, and it actually gets funneled into the, we build a sewer, like, extension of a sewer line, and it goes to Newport Sewer Treatment Plant. And that's one of, one of the larger costs. But we are overfunded by about $180,000. I don't anticipate, unless something catastrophic happens, we should have plenty of funds for the life of whatever DEQ required, thinks that's going to be. But the funds are, I have to make this very clear. The consortium has an agreement with DEQ regarding these funds. DEQ wanted these funds in their bank, and we objected to it. So, we write a check to the consortium for our share of the bills each month. We have to do an audit, and we have one independent auditor that verifies that we have X number of dollars in the bank, and our percent of the estimated cost to complete is X number of dollars, and that we're covered sufficiently. And then DEQ allows us to keep the funds here in our own bank. They can't be used for any other purpose. I can't, this is one fund that I can't borrow from.
When DEQ finally says that Aggett Beach is closed and clean, and we have money left, what happens to that?
We haven't actually addressed that, but my opinion would be that it is now unrestricted general funds of the city.
Okay. We don't have to give them to DEQ?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't have to do that. Probably what I would suggest, though, is that we take a look at garbage rate increases every time the North Lincoln Sanitary comes in, and offset their increases with money out of this fund, because that's how it got there to begin with, was a surcharge on the, on the citizens.
On the garbage bills?
Yeah, it was on the garbage bill. And, so I think if you're going to do it in the right moral way, you would reduce those costs going into the future. But I don't think I'm going to be here when DEQ says it.
But that's good to have on the record.
And I'll just.
Madam Chair.
Throw that out there, but I, that it would be unrestricted funds.
Okay.
At that point in time.
Just a quick question for Mr. Tierney, if I could. Are we allowed to draw interest on that account?
We quit allocating interest on, on this fund because we were overfunded, and so, okay, when we allocate interest, all of our interest comes from the local government investment pool, where we have all our money invested. So, it's a lump sum money that we get once a month. Scott, our accountant, has a spreadsheet where he puts the cash balance of every fund in it, and allocates that interest to every individual fund in the city. About seven, eight years ago, we took this fund out of that equation, because we didn't want to keep piling up more money in this fund. So, the interest it would earn is actually being spread to all other funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions about the Aggett Beach Closure Fund? Thank you, Mr. Tierney.
Okay, the next fund that we have to discuss is the Street Operations Fund. This is not the capital fund, but it is for this, the operation. The total budget, the total budget is $2,278,887, of which $622,684 is the beginning fund balance. It has two main revenue sources. The first is the transient room tax, which accounts for $1,164,087, and it constitutes, when you take out the fund balance, 71 percent of the total revenue. The second revenue source is the motor vehicle revenue allocation, commonly known as a gas tax, which is, accounts for $478,416 of the total revenue. There are, of the salaries and benefits, there are five full-time employees whose salaries and benefits are allocated to this fund. There are six full-time employees whose salaries and benefits are partially allocated to this fund. As you recall, we split time, we'll use an employee and split their time between different funds. And then there are three part-time employees whose salaries and benefits are partially allocated to this fund. Some of the major changes that you have on this, I'm on page 37, actually, I've gone to page 38. Item number 6201119, there's $11,250, which has been added into this expense to account for its share of the comprehensive plan review. Just a note, this is not one increasing, but it is worth noting. Item number 6203002, the city spends $190,000 a year for street lighting. Okay. If you look to item number 63010101, we are proposing $95,000 for a bucket truck replacement, and then it's. And then if you look at 6320201, that is dropping by $43,000, because in this year's budget, we had budgeted to purchase a one-ton truck with a dump body. Are there any questions on this one?
Yes, Mr. Ford?
So on the street lighting, I know the parking lot lights are LEDs. Are we moving to get all LEDs?
Do you want to address that?
Sure. We aren't at this time. I think Pacific Power and Light are the ones that maintain our lights. We're looking at them for the lights that we own and that are metered. The Ocean Lake streetlights are metered, and so we maintain those particular lights. And so we are looking at options for that right now, as far as, when we do have to replace them. But it's very expensive. It's $800 to $1,500 per light to change that in the ballast. And so we are doing quite a bit of research on it right now.
Have you noticed the savings on your LED lights that you have now?
I haven't been able to tell that. We've just been replacing them here in our parking lot on Lincoln Square. And so it's not significant enough to really see that change.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Norikus.
Page 38, third item from the bottom, system maintenance. What does that refer to? Lila, please.
That's our main line item that we use in this. And so we do, we budget for emergency repairs. And so I put $20,000 in for that. And if we do have repairs that we need to do, we'll use that money. Otherwise, we don't. And then we have asphalt for road repair. We buy pipe, catch basin replacements, pipe for storm projects. We buy our rock for gravel engrading and other road repairs. We buy all of our signs, sign faces, sign materials, out of that line item. All of our traffic paint, we buy the yellow and white traffic paint. We also buy signed parts and bolts, and that's the local hardware stores. And then we do storm cleanup, and we buy concrete and wood for our posts. So that's generally, and then we also do saw equipment maintenance comes out of that. So it's really our catch-all maintenance for everything we do.
Thank you. And I'm glad to see on page 39 that we're budgeting $30,000 for ADA planning and compliance?
Yes, yes, we're in that transition planning stage right now. And so I don't have the exact projects that we're going to do. But when I get to that point, we'll bring a presentation to council, and so everyone will be able to see what we're planning.
Thank you.
Any other questions about street operations?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Contracted services, we're seeing an increase of $13,000. Can you just fill me in a little bit?
Right, that was what Mr. Chandler mentioned at the beginning. We're doing a contribution to the comp plan of $11,000, and so that was an increase. And, so we use that contracted services line item for, we do quite a few title reports, right-of-way easements, and those are contracted out. We're also looking at purchasing the right-of-way from the school district on High School Drive in front of the Taft Elementary School. The school district owns a large lot there, and our road actually runs through the middle of it. And we don't have that designated as an actual city street, even though the street is there. So I've been working with Rich Belloni with the Lincoln County School District on that. So it'll take some survey, and so I budgeted some money to do that survey work. And then we also have North Lincoln Sanitary, and we're setting up a service. We use our TV camera that we TV the sewer lines with, and video. And so we're doing an upgrade to add a storm layer to our system, to our GIS system. So our geographic information system, our mapping system, so that we can put in conditions of those pipes and locations of those pipes. And so that's another item in there. It's $2,000.
Any other questions about street operations?
Okay, the next budget, or the next fund is the Park Maintenance Fund, which is found on Section 2, page 40. The total budget is $1,786,613, which includes a beginning fund balance of $799,221. The primary revenue source is the transient room tax, which accounts for 99% of the revenues for this fund when you do not include the fund balance. There are six full-time employees whose salaries and benefits are allocated to this fund, and there are three part-time employees whose salaries and benefits are allocated to this. Just a couple of notes. And this fund also includes, on line item 6201119, $11,250 expense for its share of the contribution to the comprehensive plan update. And then, I think that's all I have to just, to mention on this.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
One question there on Parks Maintenance. Under system maintenance, your estimate last year was $100,000, and this year it's $147,000. What is the reason on that one? Down towards the bottom of page on 41, about the seventh lineup, system maintenance?
6210010.
Right. That line item includes things like the dock repair, and I wasn't able to finish that project in this year's budget. And so I'm working on the braces and a deck repair to the Taft Dock. And then it includes, this year it includes $15,000 to refurbish the K3 ball field, and two more dugouts at the K2 field. There's three fields there, and...
So that constitutes $47,000?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Page 41, I guess, I think that's, we're on the same view. Under system maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
So the rest of that, I'm also working, I have budgeted last year for replacement of the Regatta wall. And we have some block up there, and it's not really a danger, but it's starting to deteriorate and not hold the wall up. And that entire Regatta Park, you know, is on the slope, and so everything is migrating toward the lake. And so we're going to replace that wall. And I've just been trying to get a really good design for that, and try and create maybe a little better feature of a step down. So I'm working on that one. And then we have a couple of restrooms we're trying to refurbish as well. They have quite a bit of dry rot at 17th Street and 50th Street.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Lila, you brought up the Taft Dock, and I read in your statement, or whatever we're calling it, that you're going to do bracing for leveling, bracing and leveling. Now, is that also going to include replacement of the dry-rotted portions of it?
It depends on where that budget goes. I'm not sure how, you know, how far we can go with that. We were trying to brace up the sections underneath it that are having problems. And then when we do that, it's going to help level the deck. But we were also looking at maybe a surfacing of the deck, because it's really unlevel.
It's completely unsafe. I was just out there for the Sunrise Service, and it's unwalkable. And I would really, I'm not prepared to make a motion, because I don't have my numbers lined up. But I think we do need to seriously address the condition of that dock. It's just a huge liability, as far as I'm concerned.
And we're looking at ADA access to the dock as well.
Even just able-bodied, you can't walk on it. You know, when you have boards jetting up two, three inches.
And part of that, I think, is this bracing. And so we'll see how bad it is once we fix that part of it.
Okay.
And so I have the structural engineer's report, and so I just need to get three quotes on it.
Is there a way to get something to us before this is wrapped up, so perhaps a motion could be made to increase some funding in that direction? Or is it something I just need?
Possibly. I can probably get a contractor to take a look at it.
I would be very interested in that.
Okay. I did, at least, I did at least get the design, but it's taken some time.
It's such a draw, and an icon of our city. I don't like to see it deteriorate as badly as it has. Thank you.
Any other questions about the Parks Maintenance Fund?
Yes, please, Madam Chair. On page 40, at the top of the page, under Intergovernmental State Marine Board Grant, why are they granting, what are they granting us money for, Lila?
For maintaining, we keep records of everything we do at the park. And so it's essentially a grant that they give us every year, and we have to do quite a bit of paperwork on that and show our maintenance, and so it's...
Maintenance of the facility?
Maintenance of the facility, the ramp, the restrooms, everything that we do there. And so we keep a good record of that and turn it in. And so we receive that money every year.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, which park?
It's Regatta Park. Regatta Park, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
I know that that Taft Dock is a historic dock, but it is so high that there's no way that it can be used by marine traffic. And I'm just wondering, at what point do we just decide that it's unusable as a dock, and we get rid of it and not have the expense, versus whether it's really a valuable asset from a tourist standpoint? I'm just throwing that out.
Mr. Ward, did you have a comment?
Madam Chair?
Pretty iconic feature in Taft.
Yeah, I think your constituents in Word 3 would hang you.
That really is an important asset to 51st Street, and I agree with the mayor, and that we should take care of that as much as we possibly can.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Hate to keep piling on, but I wanted to ask some more questions, because these...
No, no problem.
Gasoline fuels oils, are we doing any conversions to biofuel? Are we looking at electrification of certain vehicles? Are we going in any direction other than straight petrol?
Well, we purchased the two, we replaced a couple of vehicles here at City Hall with a Ford Focus, which is very good on gas mileage. And then the van that we purchased is also very good on gas mileage. So we're trying to go that direction where we can, but many of the trucks that we're hauling equipment and different things in, you know, that one's pretty difficult. We are getting rid of quite a few four-wheel-drive vehicles.
Do we have an opportunity, though, to convert to biodiesel? I'm uneducated on the subject, so I may just be talking out of turn here.
Yeah, I'll probably bring that back to you, because the fuel that we use now does have, it is like a biodiesel.
Oh, it is, okay. But do we manufacture our own? We have everything here to bring it together, but we don't have the site to bring it together.
I can look into that a little bit further for you.
Thank you.
Are there questions about Park Maintenance? Okay. Open space?
Yes.
Is it for me right now?
No, just a second for this one, too. If we need to bring her up, we will. The next fund is the Open Space Maintenance Fund. It has a total budget of $127,158, with a beginning fund balance of $32,463, and an ending projected fund balance of $36,009. There's no major policy issues associated with this fund in the budget, but I would like to point out that, I'll come back to that in just a second. A couple of things to note as it pertains to the revenues. The forest thinning revenue of $44,620, that is a net amount. We contract with someone to thin our forests in our open space. He in turn sells the lumber, and we receive a portion of that. And so the net amount that comes to us is just a little more than $44,000. The rest of the revenue sources are transfers from the other funds. We have one part-time employee whose salary and benefits are allocated to this fund. Much of what he does is working with volunteer groups to help maintain the trails, the open space that we have, as well as other projects that are involved with this. Some major changes in this, under item number 6201153, we are adding $6,980 for support for our mapping programs. We are including in items number 6229001, part of the $10,000 includes $2,000 for benches. And then in 6320201, we are budgeting $8,000 in the other equipment for an ATV and ATV trailer.
Any questions about the Open Space Maintenance Fund?
I had a question about the advertising and promotion and the printing. We haven't had any expenses in the past. What do you envision this money being spent on?
Above 44.
They do, the Open Space Coordinator puts out quite a few brochures and different things for volunteers. He manages the volunteer group.
So they spend no money budgeted in the past? So this is a new position, so new expenses?
The position was added last year through a budget amendment, and yeah, this is a brand-new function.
So it's new brochures that haven't been done in the past, or are they brochures that were covered maybe by a different fund?
Correct.
Yes, this position was never here before, so there weren't activities, there wasn't anybody coordinating volunteer activities. Mostly this is for events and activities and that sort of thing, where they'll do geocaching events in the open space to bring people out there and promote the open spaces. And then also this year, they'll be doing autobahn, autobahn, bird blocks? Yeah. And so getting out the information to let people know that these are happening. The one that happened last week was the first one, had 49 people show up.
Wow, great. Great. So it's new expenses because it's new promotion and new activities?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on Open Space Maintenance?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just so I was clear, the ATV and such was under the other supplies? Is that why?
It was under the other equipment, 6320201.
Okay, then other supplies jumped up $7,000. What happened there? $9,001, 622, $9,001.
Couple thousand dollars put in for benches?
It's a little more than a couple thousand, $7,000.
Well, what you have on that, Mayor, is that it's an increase of $3,000... Well, what you have on that, Mayor, is that it's an increase of $3,000 from last year's budget. Last year's budget was $7,000. We're proposing to increase it to $10,000. This year, we're only anticipating having spent $2,717 of that $10,000 budget.
And you've already decided on what kind of benches and you've allocated all that? Or that going to be another thing we're going to study for a year? You're going to have to help us with that.
Well, again, that's the catch-all place for not only benches, but garbage cans.
Right, that was my next question.
And also all the plants that they're replanting in the open spaces on the trails and that sort of thing. We don't have to pay for things like bark chips and stuff like that, those we usually get. But it's any of the supplies that he would use for maintenance of the open space.
But you've identified that this is a good cost estimate for these things? The benches and such? Again, I'm just asking, are you going to come back, you know, later and go, oh, by the way, these aren't going to be weather-resistant, we didn't think they were, we found them in a catalog? You know, I'm just, are we being generous enough with this or are we going to talk about this again?
Yeah, we have a pretty good idea of what benches would cost and about how many that we want to just do initially. And we would, in the open spaces, we would definitely be using prison-grade, you know, concrete-type stuff in those that are not...
No, no. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I just have a big thing about those concrete garbage cans. They're horrid.
Well, I was referring to benches, things that people can pick up and carry away or burn. In areas that are less accessible like that, we'd certainly use something much more durable.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the Open Space Maintenance Fund? So we're on to the Visitor and Convention Bureau Fund.
This is the last fund that we hope to cover tonight. Come on up and join us. You met Ed a week or so ago, and he's ready to answer all the questions.
Does he have a name tag? A name?
I...
Okay. There's one right behind yours, Debbie. No, he doesn't. Oh, that's Lila, okay.
The total budget for the Visitor and Convention, the Visitor and Convention Bureau is $2,645,151, which includes a beginning fund balance of $771,844. The projected ending fund balance is $716,860. I wanted to mention just a couple of things as we talk. This is an organization that's in transition. It was started with Bruce Bustamante. It's going to be carried forward with Ed Dreistat as we go forward in this. And so one of the things I wanted to do tonight was just to identify the missions and the goals. I bring that up because we've altered those a little bit from the past. They have gone before the VCC, the Visitor and Convention Committee, and they will be making a recommendation to the City Council on what is our objectives, goal, and mission for this organization. The mission of the Visitor and Convention Bureau is to promote tourism in Lincoln City, to stimulate growth, I should say growth, not grown, growth in tourism, and to create employment for a stable, sustainable future. To do that, we've identified four goals, and then the strategies of this organization will be built around these goals. The first is that the VCB will be the tourism expert and educate the community about the value of tourism and the activities of the VCB. The second is to increase our overnight visitor market, encourage longer stay by visitors to the city, and develop shoulder and off-season markets. The third is to promote Lincoln City as a place where you can enjoy hands-on experiences while visiting the Oregon coast. And then the fourth is to improve key marketing tools to competitively position Lincoln City as a premier destination. So as we go forward over the upcoming months, years, and so forth, if this, assuming this is adopted by the City Council, all of the activities that the VCB will be doing will be measured against these goals. Will we have accomplished those goals or not? Often when we're evaluating the VCB, we think of it in the sense of it costs this much to do something, and if, say, $10,000, and if it was $11,000, we were a success, if it was $9,000, we weren't a success. One of the things that we have been working towards is to look at the VCB as to how it creates the economic benefit for the community, businesses in general, and in particularly those that, from a strictly selfish city standpoint, pay TRT, pay the transient room tax. It has a direct impact on us as well as an impact on all the businesses. The primary revenue source is $1,775,257, or 95% of total revenues when you do not include the fund balance. Other revenue sources include the Culinary Center, which is budgeted to earn $65,000, and rent from the Glass Studio, which is budgeted at $18,450. The salaries and benefits, there are seven full-time and one part-time employee whose salaries and benefits are allocated to this fund. Total salaries are $413,266, which is a 2.8% decrease from 2015. The benefits are $218,227, which is a 6% increase from the 2015 budget. Now, you'll notice that one of the documents that I gave to you is this very difficult-to-read worksheet. One of the things that I did in the budget is I looked at all of the different line items was to try to get a sense of how the money is actually being spent, not just simply this amount is being spent on an advertisement, or this amount is being spent on paper clips or whatever it may be, but to try to categorize those into the type of activities that are being, that are being sponsored or being done by the VCB. So I've identified the following activities. You have marketing activities. Those would include things like print media, digital media, television, radio, et cetera. Of the materials and supplies, now I need to point out, I'm limiting this part of the discussion to the materials and supplies. I'm not including any capital, and I'm not including any salaries when you look at how this is broken up. And so the marketing portion of materials and supplies is $419,300. So if you look on this sheet, you'll notice that when you look at marketing, that includes film editing for commercials, professional photography, updating of commercials, print media, digital media, excuse me, social media, et cetera, radio in that category. For events, which would include the kite festival, finders-keepers, photography clinics, crabbing and clamming clinics, it's budgeted for $114,530. For activities associated with the Culinary Center, for materials and supplies, it's For community promotions, which includes things like wayfindings, trade shows that we might attend, maps, visitors' guides, brochures, and so forth, it's $85,600. For promotion through others is $247,500. Now, included in this budget of that $247,000 is $150,000, which is included for nonprofit grants, and then $50,000 for profit grants. Now, one of the things that I had discussed with Bruce before he left, and we'll continue this discussion with Ed, is that as the VCC, the Visitor and Conventions Committee, looks at these, looks at these grants, to also measure them against these goals and criteria so that we, so that hopefully we're getting our biggest bang for the buck. Research includes $13,000. Support is $31,760, and then maintenance, which is, and others, is $116,249. And before I finish, I would also like to point out that as we look at the, as we look at the VCB, there has been a misconception that I have at least heard in the last three months, and that's that you can simply take money and transfer that and use it somewhere else. You may be able to do that on a limited basis, but an example is you couldn't take money out of this and decide to put a sewer line in. It's not permitted under our charter. And so when we look at the activities that the VCB is involved in, it's not necessarily that you're looking at a good activity or a bad activity. They both may be good, it's just which one gives you the biggest bang for the buck? Which one is going to best meet these type of goals? And so part of what we are doing as a staff is evaluating those, that if there is a proposal for Marketing A, or Marketing B, or Event A, or Event B, which one of those will actually meet these goals and give us the biggest bang for the buck when all four of them might be good ideas? And so that's how we'll be, the staff at least, will be proceeding as we evaluate the different campaigns and promotions and events that we have. Madam Chairman, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions about VCB funds?
Chairman, I've got a couple of questions here. One is, is I can't quite understand, Ron, you have Glass Studio rent income that's paid to the VCB. The building is owned by Urban Renewal, and actually, the VCB has nothing to do with that building anymore, other than the fact that they have some brochures in there. Doesn't quite make sense to me, but maybe I'm not understanding it properly.
I don't have an answer to that, but I will follow up with that.
And I guess one of my biggest questions, the fact that when we're looking at the that we're funding, and, you know, the cost of funding that with a full-time chef and a sous chef, and the expenses of operating that operation up there for the limited amount of visitor participation we get, I think that, I think with the new director, Ed, that can find out a much better use for that money than for promoting Lincoln City rather than paying in that Culinary Center. I'm not real sure how it got started, and I think there's probably a lot better uses for that floor up there, too, in the Culinary Center. Not putting down the VCB and what it does, because I'm a big, I'm a big fan of economic development and a big fan of promoting Lincoln City. But I don't believe the Culinary Center up there, we're getting, as you said, a bang for our buck. And it's costing us a big chunk of dough, and for operation, you could still have it on a limited basis and have it done by volunteer chefs instead of funding it the way we are today. I realize that Ed, it's been thrown in his face, and also Ron's case, he hasn't really had a chance probably to evaluate it, but I don't believe that that is a paying proposition up there, and the money could be a lot better spent.
Any other comments about the VCB funds?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
On, we're at Training, 6206002. We're up to $11,500 from $2,000. What is it that we're training? Page forty-six, 6206002. Page forty-six, $11,500.
Just down from the middle of the page.
There's $4,500 of that that was moved from meetings. If you look at the budget, a lot of things have switched categories, just to bring more clarity to the budget. There were a lot of things in another miscellaneous category that had been reallocated to other places in the budget. Looking at what was done, the way the budget was structured before it was like someone put it into a blender, you know? There were just a lot of things that really needed to be shuffled around and moved. So there's, $4,500 of that came from a different category that's better described as training. And if you, second, let me look up.
Your microphone, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just give me one second. I need, I'm trying to cross-reference this.
Was this budget put together mostly by Mr. Bustamante?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the, and while Ed's looking at that, one of the things that he looked at is that there was one line item that just was kind of the catch-all. And part of what he wanted to do on that was to break that out. And so there are accounting changes that you'll see in this where it hasn't changed the overall budget, it's just moved it to a different line item.
I guess my biggest question or concern, and I understand getting things straight, and I appreciate that, but I'm looking at an $11,000 budget for training, whereas if I look at other departments, it doesn't even come close. And I'm just curious, what in the world do we need to train people for, for $11,500?
The largest, the largest expense of that, Mayor, is an $8,500 expense for staff conferences at the Oregon Destination Marketing National Tour Association and the Oregon Coast Visitors Association.
And how many staff does that include?
I don't know on that, Mayor, I'd have to find out.
I would hate to think we're sending the entire staff or something like that. I'd sure love to go.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on.
Okay, I'm going to have to find that out.
Yep. And then again, I'm assuming it's a shuffling of numbers, but your stationary supplies have kind of been all over the board. We're at 3,000, 3,000, 2,500, 1,500. I guess we're just getting back to the 2,000. Other supplies, again, it just bounced all over the place. Promotional supplies, again, is this just reorganizing?
Most of that is reorganizing, yes.
Okay. We've got the budgeting for the ADA improvements, which is good. And then we have a $60,000 other equipment on forty-seven.
That includes developing a new website. The one we have now is getting a little long in the tooth, and it's something you kind of have to do every five or six years.
So website's going to be under other equipment as a capital outlay?
Come in, Debbie.
Go ahead. 6320201.
A rewrite of the website, we would consider that a capital item, that we would capitalize and amortize, so we put it down in a capital line item.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see that $30,000 was budgeted last year, but it wasn't spent.
Yeah, so the website work is budgeted at $30,000. There's also $15,000 that's budgeted for a digital entrance sign and assistance with the sign for the community center. That's another $15,000.
And do you anticipate coming to council at some point and say, okay, here's where we think the numbers should land for future discussions? So like next year's budget, we won't have this issue of, we just have to go, okay? We're trying to sort this out with you.
Next year, hopefully, it'll be apples to apples again. You know, it'll be much clearer what's being spent for the Culinary Center, and the line items should line up. And again, the biggest problem we had was in that other supplies category. There were just a lot of things in there that really needed to be elsewhere.
And is that why we see $45,000 to the Culinary Center supplies, when it was a previous zero?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, the goal here is to make the budget more transparent, so it's very obvious where the expenses lie.
Okay. All right. I want to rant tonight.
There is one more thing that I would like to bring up that has been a request since we've put all of this together, and that is from our planning department, would also like to have the VCB contribute towards the comprehensive plan, and they're asking for a $20,000 contribution towards the comprehensive plan.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Fireworks. That expense, does that include the outlay for additional police funds and sanitation and the like?
That is just the cost of the fireworks.
Is the cost of the fireworks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do we have any sense if, is that going to, well, Mr. Sprague probably answers this, is that getting us, no pun intended, the bang for the buck? Do we want to up that a little bit? I mean, it's a hugely popular, oh, I'm sorry.
I think we've gone through this probably every year when it came time for budget. And I think each year we've shown that in pulling the motels and the rest of the businesses that we increased the population, first of all, of Lincoln City by about 25,000, 30,000, just on that one day or two days, that weekend, whatever, however it falls, and that the businesses really get a big bang for their buck. So it's, we're promoting it, the businesses and the motels and what have you, Lincoln City is benefiting by it, and that's what the VCB is all about.
But I guess my question was, do you think we need more? Do you think we need more money to increase the fireworks?
Well, we start, when I first started shooting that show, we started at about $9,000. And we found that other cities were going up around 15, 18, 20, and they were beginning to draw from Lincoln City because of people were going to where the bigger show was. And I've always been an advocate of a larger show. I would be, if I was still shooting, I'd be happy to shoot a $40,000 show here, but unfortunately, the body doesn't allow. But anyway, I would, I would be happy to bump it five grand real easy.
Thank you. Because I'd kind of like to, I'm not sure, again, if I have to make this motion tonight, if I can make it later, because I would love to increase some funding for this, and perhaps take it from the culinary center and the sous chef's position, if that's...
You can make a motion tonight, or you can wait until Monday.
I'll wait till Monday till I get my numbers straightened out. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Ward?
I would just like to bring up about the fireworks display. That the, you know, the city's a 10% partner in this as far as the TRT revenues, and if you do the math, and you figure in the extra nights that have been rented, and the more money that you're renting them for, you know, $30,000 in fireworks actually gets paid back a lot of it to the city just that weekend, and increased TRT revenues, collections that go 10% back to the city. So when this has come up before, we ran the math, and you know, it's not like we're full, without it, we're full at 100 bucks a night, with it, we're full at 160 bucks a night, and we are full. And as I said, you know, the city's 10%, they get their cut right off the top, so it's not spending money willy-nilly, it's almost a freebie.
I agree.
Mr. Warner?
I was going to ask the question whether anybody has had the opportunity to read this report on the culinary center.
I did.
People get copies of it?
Yes.
Well, after reviewing the cost of the culinary center here, I think what we're spending up there is totally ridiculous, and I know it probably won't fly, but I'm going to state my position. I think that the culinary center should be eliminated. I make that in the form of a motion.
Madam Chair, just for some clarification, are you talking about the program, or getting rid of all the equipment and clearing the floor?
I should say, I better clarify, I should say that the city funding, they want to do it with volunteer help and coordination with the rest of the employees, the VCB, fine, but for us to fund it currently, in the amount of money that we're funding that for, I think it's a total waste of our money, and I think we have to take that money, develop programs with it, they're going to be a lot more beneficial in bringing visitors to Lincoln City. You've got, you've got a full-time chef up there, you've got a sous chef, you've got, my God, when you look through this here, that we're buying shoes for people that work up there, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I leave my motion standing that we eliminate the funding for it, but you can keep the program that we do it with volunteers.
Well, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to eliminate the funding for the culinary center. Discussion.
I guess my, Madam Chair?
Dick Anderson.
My thoughts on that is I don't disagree with Mr. Warner as far as it's always of question and has been. I think, though, rather than sitting here uninformed, as we all are, and certainly opinionated, I would feel much more comfortable with giving it to Ed. We've hired him for a purpose, giving him the opportunity to take a look at it, and see, let him make his overall recommendations as to better utilization of the dollars. And I think he needs certainly a year to take a look at that operation. That's why we hired him.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ward?
I agree with you, Dick. I have to say that I'm concerned, and I think Mr. Warner has a lot of good points. But Ed's just started here, and he comes in where we've actually had kind of two turnovers, and I trust that, I would honestly like to take a hard look at the culinary center, and, you know, Ron's an economist, and Ed has a lot of experience, and maybe is, I mean, in the nicest possible way, not just looking at the systems and looking at it hard and cold, and see where we're going right and see where we're going wrong. And I think there's good reason to have concern, but I would agree with Dick, and as long as the professionals are willing to do it, that we do that, and maybe look at other things besides the culinary center. There was, that was a lot of things happening for a lot of years, so...
Other comments?
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to add, I just want to make sure that nobody misconstrues that I have anything against Sharon Weest or Donna, that's the sous. This is not a personal issue with personalities or anything like that. But I do, I've been involved with this for many years on different levels. I can't legitimize the funding. I can't look at these dollars and say, okay, a head chef gets in the 70,000 range. It's not a normal number for that position, and that'd be a, you know, a five, six, seven night a week job in Portland at 40,000. And I just, I'm a little concerned that we're just going to pass another year and spend another 80, $100,000, and then hear maybe, well, we're going to try and trim some, you know. I understand people's concerns, but also, I don't think we're getting what we're paying for in this. I honestly do not think we are.
The one thing that, if I might just add, the one thing that we, that is true that we have not had the chance to do is, as I've mentioned, talking about comparison of good things, is that the one thing we haven't, well, there's two things we haven't been able to do. One is to thoroughly evaluate it, to know its impact, but the also is to compare it against what? So that if we're going to make that kind of a change, what is the alternative to the culinary center? And that is something we just have not had that opportunity to do.
Mr. Sprague?
I think, Ed, you've been here, what, about a week?
Yeah.
That's not enough time to evaluate any department, I don't think. My feeling is, let's leave the thing in the budget for right now, let's challenge Ed to come back and support it. And if he can't support it, then the council can take the position that we need to make a change. But I think to just cut it off right now, without giving him an opportunity to either support it or want to get rid of it, I think that would be wrong.
I just have one issue I want to address. Four events per year was mentioned, and the culinary center is much, much more than that. There are probably at least three classes a month that are sold out, mainly to out-of-town people. They come into town for the weekend. It's well-used by out-of-town people. Often, locals can't get in because the classes are full. And that means VCB is doing a good thing.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Skipper?
I would like to add that we set a timeframe for this reevaluation of this program, and I think 16 to 90 days that we should be able to get a report on that, and make a more conservative decision.
Thank you, Mr. Skipper. So we do have a motion, and second on the floor, motion to eliminate funding for the culinary center. Any more discussion? Ms. Chair?
Baird? Davis?
Yep.
Norikas?
No.
Quant?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Skipper? Sprague?
No.
Walke?
No.
Ward?
No.
Warner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Mr. Davis has returned.
Please, your vote?
No.
Thank you. Motion failed.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I think my point just got across, anyway, that's what I was after.
Thank you. Got the discussion going.
We have a serious problem there.
Okay. Any other questions of VCB Director?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ed, welcome aboard, by the way. Pleasure to have you, hope we get to spend some time together. Are you finding, as you search for information, are you finding full cooperation? Are you finding it easy to get information? Is there anything that anyone could do for you that you might need help with?
One of the things I'm trying to do, and it gets into the whole discussion with the culinary center, with everything that we're doing here, really, is what are the metrics? Where can we get numbers to tell what's working, what's not? You know, what are the factors we need to be looking for? I had a great conversation today with a person at Travel Oregon, and I've been invited to go up to their offices, and they're going to lay out every capability they have, media evaluations, all the surveys they have, which will help us, you know, make that judgment. Today, at the Love Your Lincoln event up at the Cultural Center, the person in charge of the outlet mall, and I guess this is a big change from the days when it was run by Tanger, offered up all of our numbers, and basically said that the surveys we do, the traffic counts we get, everything we have, they're available. I'm beginning to feel that through a variety of sources and a variety of things that we're doing, I'll be much better able to come here and say, this worked and this didn't. We're looking at some reporting software where we can track PR hits and give evaluation to those hits. You know, one of the factors we have to look at, be it fireworks or culinary center or anything else, is when we get press, what was that worth? You know, how does that compare to buying media in that market? And how does that compare with the money we're investing in this festival event or whatever? I'm hoping to get to the point fairly soon where I can start to come in, or I can provide Ron with an idea of, well, what's our return on investment? You know, what are the things that we're doing that are home runs, and what are the things that we're doing that really aren't giving us that much of a return and maybe should be put aside in favor of something else? So I'm very encouraged so far by the offers I've got and the cooperation and some of the things we have in the pipeline. So a very long answer to your short question.
Good question. Yes, it's been great so far. And kind of a follow-up, if, when you come back with your findings, let's say there needs to be some personnel changes or eliminations, is that then goes to Mr. Chandler, and then that's your job at that point, or is it in the direction of the VCB Director? Who makes that decision?
Ultimately, with the exception of two other positions, I'm responsible for the hiring and eliminating of positions.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments, questions about the VCB or any other part of the budget, before we adjourn for the night?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Warner?
I think every, just to make it clear, certainly I hope, and I think that everyone else here hopes, that the culinary center is doing well. I mean, that's great information if we get that.
Well, I think one of the other things we need, excuse me, that we need to look at is, you know, is there opportunity for cost reduction? Is there an opportunity for increased revenue? Can we get the offset to the point where it's not as much of an expenditure as we have now? I really don't have answers to all this, but those are avenues we need to look at. And I'll let you know when I figure out, when I come back with a report.
And Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. We have finally discovered Rob Pounding's original white letter about the intent of the creation of the cultural center, so we do have that available for you.
The culinary center?
The culinary center, yeah. Yeah, I'd love a copy of that. Thank you.
Mr. Norikas?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is not regarding the culinary center or the VCB, but Mr. Chandler, I heard you earlier in the meeting refer to one or more departments coming in under budget. And it's true, is it not, that we do not have a departmental policy of using it or losing it? So the department is not under pressure to utilize everything that's budgeted, whether they need it or not?
That's true. I have never in my career penalized somebody for coming in under budget. And the reason for that is that if you do, in the last quarter, they'll start spending where they haven't needed to spend it. So I've never done that in my career.
Nor do we do that in the city.
As I understand it, that's correct.
I have not seen that either, and I've been extremely grateful for that. I have worked in places where that has been the policy, and the motivation is not, yeah, it's, people spend things they don't need.
Now, I will say that if it's year after year after year, then an item keeps coming in under budget, then perhaps we need to evaluate whether or not we're over-budgeting it. But just because they did a good job this year, I would not penalize a department for that.
And my second comment is, our city attorney takes direction from the city council. City council is responsible for establishing policy, directing staff to create ordinances supporting those policies, and after study and discussion, enacting the requested ordinances. I believe we hire a city attorney to, one, ensure that we, the city, follow all applicable laws, and, two, to protect the city from all avoidable risk. In my opinion, our city attorney has acted as city council has directed, and continuously works to ensure that we are legal and protected. Our city attorney is hardworking, very capable, honest, and fair. I believe he earns the salary that the city council has agreed to pay him, and I believe he deserves our respect and appreciation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. We're adjourned until Monday, May 18th at 6:00 PM. There'll be urban renewal budget at 5:00 PM that evening, city budget at 6:00. Thank you.
18th.
9:30.
Giving summation speeches here, I've had mine already.
See you there, John.
So, tell me, thanks.
Isn't this fun?
Only needed two cough drops.
From fireworks.
Well, you might as well say it.
Wasted money.
This is your opportunity.
We all agree to be...